It's our twinkling clock.
Can you refresh?
Can you refresh?
We have eleven people logged in already.
All right, Candy, you're up. I'm getting nothing. Texting me saying, can you start yet? Okay, hang on. You got it? Perfect. Thanks. Okay, thank you all for your patience. If we pull in more chairs and we have one board member joining us remotely, Candy, just phone here. So we'll start this meeting by asking all these proud citizens.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Because all my board members present today said, "Wanna get through to the virtually opponent present." And Chris, did you hear us? Can we hear you?
Yes, we are good. Thank you.
That's perfect. Thank you. Okay, we'll open our meeting with this for comments. I know we have quite a few here this evening. Uh, let's see. I'm just gonna do these in the order in which they were signed in. So first, I have Russell Schnitzer. Well, however, how are you gonna make it through? Sorry about that. We'll plan an aisle next time.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, can everybody hear me?
Leaving post that mic, just make sure it don't scratch it. We'll hear a rumble. There you go.
Okay. Hello, my name is Russell Schnitzer. During last board meeting, I talked about my nine-year-old daughter Natalie Schnitzer, who recently completed her first year wrestling for Southern Lehigh. Natalie persevered through several challenges, including being injured, to gain a podium spot in wrestling tournaments. Along with her strength and determination, her wrestling journey was made possible by numerous volunteers, coaches, and parents who have provided time, energy, and inspiration. With the end of the Southern Lehigh season, Natalie has chosen to continue wrestling in the grit mat club. Along with wrestling, she also swims and plays soccer. At the start of the soccer season, each of Natalie's teammates had a few moments to introduce themselves. The girls talked about how much they love soccer or how many years they have played soccer. Here's Natalie's introduction. Hello, my name is Natalie and I wrestle. As wrestling grows and gains a stronger foothold in our community and the nation as a whole, there will be more Nattalies saying, "I will not give up," or "This is my dream." These future Nattalies will learn about the importance of personal fitness, practice, dedication, and fortitude. With each year, the girls will become stronger, more athletic, and more knowledgeable, thus growing the sport and its place in the community. This will not happen overnight. Only with continuous support from our community can we teach and inspire the next generation of athletes and leaders. I have tried to tell a story of little girl named Natalie. I have tried to show her story is universal. That we all want our children to succeed, to feel the thrill of victory. That as parents, it is our responsibility to provide our children with the opportunity not available to us. When I see Natalie in the evening, sometimes she's upset. Typically, her mood depends on the day's events. There are times when someone made fun of her or made her feel bad. I ask her, "Do you want me to call the teacher, the principal, the students' parents? What can I do to fix the problem?" Her response is always, "I just want moral support." She's strong, much stronger than me. The important lesson that I learned from this experience is to believe in my daughter and to support her 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have John Lyons.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name is John Lyons. I'm a parent of four boys, three of which are in, well, they're all in Southern Lehigh School District. Three are actually in school now. Each of them wrestle. I'm also the president of the youth wrestling in Southern Lehigh here. And I'm here to voice my support for the girls' middle school and high school wrestling programs. When my oldest son, Jack, was in kindergarten, I guess seven, eight years ago at this point, there you could, you could make a reasonable argument that the future for girls' wrestling was undetermined. However, since that time, a number of things has changed, a number of factors involved in that. But I'd say from that time when you had about one in 20 high school wrestlers, female, to a time now where it's around one in six, some things that have influenced that are stories like that of Bryce Snyder, who was a girl who lived in Southern Lehigh, wrestled in our youth program. And their family actually moved into Palisades when she, I think, went in the seventh grade or so. And she continued on with the sport of wrestling in Palisades. Three years ago, started a girls' wrestling program, like many other schools in the area. And they started one, they had one high school girl wrestler three years ago. They have 10 today. And Bryce is one of the two from that team who placed at states. They also have a state champion. So I think it's stories like that, along with a lot of other factors in terms of the Olympics and other higher-level competitions that are growing for women in the sport. But even just that, it's filtering down to lower levels like high school, where a girl like Bryce, if she had lived in Southern Lehigh District at this point in time, wouldn't have had that opportunity. So right now, we have a number of girls in the Southern Lehigh District that are in the same position as Bryce. And I think it's something we have the opportunity to give them, the opportunity that she has, and open up the gates. Yeah, basically, we have an opportunity to give them an equal playing ground in the sport and something that they are very passionate about and something that they put a lot of time and dedication into. Also, I understand that it takes more than a coach and some bussing to have a successful program. And just want to communicate to the school board here that there's also a community that you see here tonight ready to support them in their endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Jennifer Lyons. And your son, in the meantime, has been doing a great job being a big brother, entertaining his young, right? So I see, I see Lyons on that sweatshirt walking around. Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Lyons. I'm obviously the mother of four boys, three of which that have gone through the youth wrestling program since kindergarten. Our boys are in seventh, fifth, and second grade. And obviously, our one-and-a-half-year-old is over there as well. And he'll be coming up through the ranks in the future. As you can imagine, being a mother of all boys, you must be wondering why I'm here tonight. And it's to support the start of the girls' wrestling program. I'm here in support of the program because I feel strongly that girls should have the equal opportunity in the sport of wrestling. If any of you have observed a wrestling match at the middle school, high school level, you will quickly realize that many of these boys, or even girls, that are wrestling aren't just boys or girls, but young men and young women. In many cases, these young men have an unfair advantage over any girl wrestler. I was a collegiate athlete and cannot imagine how it would have been for me to have to compete against boys in my sport. I know my experience and my takeaway from each competition would not have been as great if I were to have to compete against boys. Despite watching my boys wrestle for the last eight years, I'm not an expert, I will say that. But the things that I do know are the most important things to understand about the sport. It is the lessons that are taught through the sport. These lessons of dedication, perseverance, focus, and sportsmanship are some of the most important lessons that our young adults can learn in life and which the classroom will not teach these kids. I think the request for a girls' wrestling program empowers and supports all girls within our school district, whether they choose to participate or not. Today, I'm asking that you vote yes to a girls' wrestling program so that there is an equal opportunity where girls can benefit from a sport that many would otherwise not participate in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Jenna Trumbauer.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Trumbauer. And my husband and I are proud parents of a first-great daughter who recently completed her first year wrestling. The Southern Lehigh Youth Wrestling Team has superseded our expectations. The camaraderie felt at such a young age has been so welcoming. It's clear to our family this sport is building a strong foundation to help our young athletes succeed. Since the age of four, my daughter was interested in karate. They didn't want her to start until five, but with a tryout, they let her in. By five, it was important to my husband and I that our daughter learned self-defense. This is when we put her in jiu-jitsu. In jiu-jitsu, the problem was size. She sits at a whopping eighth percentile for height and weight. My daughter's skill set was better than most kids at her tiny size. However, inventory of kids available to help build her skill set was sparse. Fast forward to wrestling at six. Finally, our daughter Letty found a place for her size and skill set, a skill set to be changed, challenged, and learned. She's been challenged in a new sport, new roles to be learned, new teammates, a sport that is both individual and team-based, a far larger amount of athletes her size to be challenged by. She was able to celebrate and endure both wins and losses by herself and with teammates. Brian Rizzo, John Lyons, and the Southern Lehigh Youth Program has done an amazing job at creating a strong foundation for these kids. We've witnessed this just within one season of my daughter wrestling. They have made us feel like family. Our daughter has never felt like an outcast, but has only continued to blossom. Wrestling I've learned is far greater than the obvious athleticism it brings to young kids. It promotes personal responsibility in getting out what you put in, helps develop mental and emotional resilience, leadership skills, discipline, and accountability in self-defense. I was reading an article in Psychology Today explaining how men are physically stronger than women, who on average have less muscle mass, both in absolute terms and in relative to total body mass. Men have greater cardiovascular reserve with larger hearts and greater lung volume per body mass. It also goes on to state how women are more likely to suffer from depression, anxiety disorders, and eating disorders than men. Girls' wrestling has become the fastest-growing high school sport in this country. Let's encourage our girls' improvement in mental and physical health, build self-esteem, and pave the way in the success of attaining college scholarships. Lastly, on a more personal note, never did I expect the comments that we got along the way of my daughter wrestling. I've yet to meet someone that wasn't supportive. We've had several other families that make a point to tell us how their daughters now want to wrestle after hearing and seeing my daughter wrestle. However, I can't help but hear my original fear resurface. What happens if we get to the future when she faces the inevitable, wrestling a male that physically cannot be compared to the female athlete? With this being said, I strongly urge you to approve the creation for a middle school and high school girls' wrestling team for 2024 school year for all the future female wrestlers. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Brian Rizzo.
Hello, school board. Thanks for having me again tonight. I look back and I appreciate the support we have in our community. I was here at the end of February. And I'm not going to rehash all of that, but what I am do, just reaffirming my support of the girls' wrestling program, both in the junior high and high school. I look, I see Lucia, who is my first-year coaching. I see Gia. I know Autumn, Scarlett, and Natalie that are still on my youth program. I know in order for all of them to succeed, and especially Natalie and Scarlett, who are still in the youth program for a few more, we need not only a junior high, but high school team. They can't really be separate. That kind of goes against the principles of a progression from youth to junior high to high school. So I'm looking at all of you on the board to make the right decision and vote yes for both junior high and high school girls' wrestling. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Lucia Crosskin.
Hello, my name is Lucia Crosskin and I'm in the eighth grade. I've been wrestling for Southern Lehigh for almost five years. This past season at districts, I was denied the opportunity to wrestle in the girls' bracket and had to compete against the boys. When I started wrestling in fourth grade, I was usually the only girl in wrestling tournaments and had to wrestle with the boys. Now, outside of Southern Lehigh, I compete in girls' brackets with 30-plus girls. I've been blessed to meet so many inspiring females through wrestling. My goal is to have the same impact on young women as the young women who inspire me, like Aubrey Crazer from Easton, who has won three state titles and is ranked number one in the nation, Savannah Witt from Palisades, who also won the Girl States this year and is ranked number four in the nation, and Skylar Groth, who is competing to make an Olympic team. Over the past few years, I've watched girls' wrestling grow tremendously. With having a girls' team, I'll be able to get other females to join our Southern Lehigh team. Many of my friends are willing to wrestle but will not wrestle on the boys' team. Your vote tonight puts me and these girls behind me in the same situation as districts. Do we get to compete with the girls or be denied again? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Gia Kaprizlis. I know I botched that last name, right? You can feel free to correct me and adjust that mic. Yeah, there you go.
Hi, my name is Gia Kaprizlis and I'm a sixth grader at Southern Lehigh. I just finished wrestling in our youth program. My question is, what's next for me? The sixth-grade boys on my team are excited to move up to our junior high team. I don't think it would be very fair to me or the other girls on our team if we would have to, that to be team and wrestle boys. They are stronger and it would not be fair to wrestle boys. Wrestling is great for physical strength and confidence. As a girl going into middle school, these are very important. It teaches you lessons no other sport can. And I can't blame my team for any losses. It teaches you to be tough physically and mentally and will show me lessons to take me from the rest of my life. I hope you give the female athletes like myself a fair chance to compete and feel comfortable in the sport of girls' wrestling. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Stephen Crosskin.
Good evening. This is my fourth time speaking with our board regarding girls' wrestling becoming a sanctioned and school-sponsored sport here at Southern Lehigh. The solicitor has confirmed the legal interpretation of the current school policy 123.2 and the fact that it does not prohibit you as a school board from voting on and approving girls' wrestling, moving directly to a school-sponsored PIAA sport. Obviously, we're very excited about the vote tonight and can't thank the community enough for coming together here. I would like to take a proactively, excuse me, I would like to proactively address any community members who come up to the microphone or on social media challenging or discouraging the board's approval of girl wrestling. I don't understand why some choose to take a famine mentality and want to take away from girls having equal opportunity to grow their own team and not be forced to wrestle boys. We have chosen not to take a famine mentality and are not trying to justify our funding by taking from someone else's cause. We understand that it is the administration's job to review the success of the investments to determine if they are justified and provide a sufficient return. I am sure this will happen with girls' wrestling after a few years, and I'm confident that it will be deemed a success. To be clear for those who are not yet aware, we are talking about 0.05% of the overall school budget to allow girls to have the same opportunity as boys. I would also like to respond to some of the questions regarding interest in girls' wrestling. As I've said previously, the number of girls that are wrestling for our boys' team is not representative of the number of girls that would wrestle if there were a girls' team. However, right now, the absolute bare minimum for the high school girls next year is a 300% increase from where it was this past season and bare minimum a 300% increase for the junior high level as well. I'd like to thank our school board members, who've been strong supporters from the beginning. I'd also like to thank our athletic director, our principal, our wrestling coaches, and our superintendent for their continued support of girls' wrestling. While some may think this is a new topic or discussion, I would like them to be aware the PIAA sanctioned girls' wrestling last year for the inaugural PIAA season of girls' wrestling. Additionally, I'd like them to be aware that this journey began over a year ago when our superintendent read a letter to the board in January of 2023 supporting sanctioning girls' wrestling. Tonight, this board will have the opportunity to finally move forward with the vote showing their true support for equality with our girls. When the press release goes out tonight from sanctioned PA, I certainly hope that we can celebrate a unanimous vote of yes from all nine board members supporting the girls in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have James Krakowski.
Good evening, board members. My name is James Krakowski. I'd like to thank you for allowing me the time to speak. Since my daughter found out there may be a girls' wrestling team, that's all she could talk about is extremely excited that there's a possibility for girls' wrestling. Right now, they're only allowing girls to wrestle on the boys' team, which is something my wife and I will not allow her to do. As of now, she is not registered or signed up for any wrestling, but if this vote goes through for a girls' team, she will sign up next year to wrestle. I will feel with the additional, with the addition of a girls' wrestling team, you're creating more opportunity for these girls and girls for generations to come. I would like to thank you again for letting me speak, and I hope that you take what I've said into consideration when voting. Thank you.
Next, I have Lisa Foley.
Hi, my name is Lisa Foley, and I was the theater director for this school year. My hope in sharing these thoughts and suggestions is that you consider changing the budget structure for the theater program. I feel we had a wonderful season, but based on our challenges from this year, I believe we can do better for our students. When I began on day one, I had no monitors, no front lights, no spotlights, poorly working mics, and archaic equipment, which includes your sound and lighting board. I was told I had $10,000 to design and install lighting for two shows and a small amount left over from last year to purchase new show rights. The reality is our monetary needs are more than four times that amount to fall in line with other schools of our caliber. Let's start with lights. The school offered to fix the front lights, which they did. The problem was they were installed improperly because they were not installed by professionals. The result was that the bulbs themselves were touched by human skin, which resulted in them exploding, causing us to have to replace them again for our musical. That was an unforeseen cost. We lost our orchestra, which cost us money to rent music tracks. Our only other option was to pay a professional orchestra. Considering the fact that we were not given a budget for a musical director or an orchestra, tracks were our only option. We do not have a theater tech department in this school. This is someone who can run a lighting board, a soundboard, microphones, and digital backgrounds, sound effects, sound balancing in the theater. All of this has to be outsourced. We needed to hire professionals to make this work. New monitors were required to allow the students to hear the music onstage. The school purchased the monitors but has no technical support to set them up. So we were forced to hire a professional to get that job done, which cost us even more money. Even with the professionals we hired, the equipment provided by the school failed us miserably. Let's begin with the laptop that the school provided. This was to run our musical tracks, digital backgrounds, and sound effects. On the very first night of our performance, our computers froze and no musical tracks were playing during the performance. Some of the performers had to keep the show going by singing a cappella. We also lost our stage lighting due to the faulty lighting board. The projections sometimes worked, and every night, we didn't know what to expect. The kids joked that we were put together with spike tape. On Saturday evening's performance, we arrived to discover we had no music, no sound effects, and no projections. The laptop the school provided completely crashed. We had three hours to figure out what to do. Thanks to Matt Ware, who answered his personal phone, got us into his office and provided his password for his laptop, each and every song, every sound effect, and every projection had to be installed and tested, and our kids were scrambling up until minutes before the show. I'm happy to sit down and speak with you in greater detail regarding our challenges. In the meantime, we would like to email you a list with our proposed improvements for our theater needs. This year, thanks to the personal connections my team had, we were able to pull off a great show, but the school cannot function like this and handle future productions without additional funding. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Lisa Maloney.
Thank you. Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Lisa Maloney. I have two children in the district, one in high school and one in elementary school. I'm here tonight to talk about a couple of different things. First, after my comments at the last school board meeting in support of our performing arts programs, some have commented that I and others like me are against a girls' wrestling program, and I want to clarify for the board that that is not the case. I want to make it clear to the board and the community that my comments have been taken out of context, and I'm fully in support of a girls' wrestling program, that those girls deserve every opportunity that is available to them. And I hope we do have the funds for a program and that that vote passes tonight. What I'm not in favor of is the continual overlooking or minimizing of the needs of our performing arts programs and facilities. In no way is it anti-girl sports for taxpayers to want to be informed of where the $43,000 to fund this wrestling program will come from. While Mr. Crosskin and everyone here does not want to take funding away from any other programs, I wholeheartedly believe that, we do need to ensure that that money is not going to come from other programs. We know how budgets work, and that money has to come from somewhere. It's not that the money would be spent on girls' wrestling, it's just how do we have that money to spend, especially in the wake of rumors of an 11% high school budget cut that I understand has been proposed to be determined, as well as the fact that our district has chosen to not replace teachers who have left the district and have eliminated those empty positions in order to cut costs. I don't feel there's been a lot of transparency to the public as to how this district has $43,000 available for this program. But if our district has that money, then that's fantastic. I really hope this vote passes tonight. Now, what about those parents and students for performing arts and other programs who have come before the board and have asked or pleaded for years for money for their programs as well? Why didn't anyone on the board attempt to fast-track those requests, as this one has been? We have multiple regional and state PME A-recognized musicians in our district. And as I mentioned at the last school board meeting, we have hundreds of participants in our arts programs. All we are asking for is that our arts programs get the same attention as athletics. We want equal consideration, and I'm not sure why money can be found for one set of programs and not the other. Last meeting, I stood here and gave you a few details about arts-related needs and money that's being spent by parents and by nonprofit organizations, and I won't bore you with those details again. But I will continue to work with other parents and come to you to provide you with information on the lack of equity for our performing arts programs when it comes to the athletics in our district. Our programs for the arts bring awards and recognition to Southern Lehigh, just as our athletics do. And we just want the same attention for those programs that have hundreds and hundreds of participants. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Paul Diebel.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say that I believe that academic and athletic programs really enhance the student's experience. You go beyond the classroom and look at programs such as athletics, any type of competition, where students are learning, drive, discipline, teamwork. That kind of thing really rounds out a student. So with that, I wholeheartedly and fully support the addition of girls' wrestling program. Now, recently, my son is not very athletic. So we were looking at non-athletic competitions that he could participate in. One of the things was math counts. It was something that I participated in when I was in junior high and managed to win locally and go to our state competition. We were disappointed to find out that Southern Lehigh did not host a math counts team. Fortunately, we were able to sign him up as a non-school competitor. He actually went on to play swell here in the Lehigh Valley and managed to finish 20th in the state of Pennsylvania. He was the second-highest non-school competitor in the competition. I had recently asked the administration to provide to me a list of competitions that are non-athletic nature, and I was surprised to see how few there were. We have robotics, we have esports, we have debate, to name a few. But we certainly... We have robotics, we have esports, we have debate, to name a few, but we certainly don't bring forth the level of competition in these non-athletic programs that we certainly do. And believe me, we have great athletic program here from football, basketball, and now with expanding our wrestling program. So that is great, but I'd like to see more emphasis put on some of these academic competitions such as math counts, such as chess team, and I certainly could go on there. So I'd like to see a little bit more emphasis on the whole experience for the students, not just with athletics. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Nick Frabel.
Thanks for having me. So last week, I had the opportunity of, I was in Austin, Texas, and I had all four of my boys with me who all wrestled, and, you know, we were having a discussion about wrestling. My oldest is 26. I've got a 20-year-old, he no longer wrestles. I have a 20-year-old who wrestles at West Point, and I have a ninth grader who wrestles. I coached a bunch of these kids here, and I'm really proud that they showed up to support the cause. Lucia, being a pioneer, and Gia, couldn't be prouder of these girls. In any event, the discussion was, you know, I wanted to be very candid. What did you think of the, like, do you think that wrestling made you a better person? Would you have your kids wrestle? Like, oh, I hated wrestling, but my kids are gonna wrestle. All right? The point is, I mean, the, the discipline, the experience, the lessons you learn about life, I mean, they, they are what define you as a person. They make, they build character. We always talk about building character as, as a byproduct of wrestling. So I don't have any daughters, but I may have granddaughters. I have a niece, and, you know, it would be tragic if they wouldn't wrestle because they had to wrestle boys, or they didn't have the opportunity because we didn't have the, wherever school they go, or this school, doesn't have the equity to provide the opportunity for girls wrestling. Dr. Mahan, I heard at a prior meeting where you talked about, you believe if you build it, they will come, and I've seen firsthand other programs. Steve, where is Ryan Seiggrave? Central Dauphin? Cumberland Valley. They had no program five years ago. Right now, they've got over 70 girls, and they're one of the best in the state. Ryan Seiggrave, by coincidence, wrestled at West Point. West Point is gonna have a wrestling program. Harvard's gonna have a wrestling program. All the Big Ten teams. It opens a lot of doors, having that opportunity. If we build it, they will come. Yeah, there's a handful of girls that wrestle, but I almost can't guarantee, but I would put, put a lot of money on if we build it, we're gonna have 20, 30, 40 girls involved in girls' wrestling in a short period of time, and it's gonna open up doors for them to get into college, and it's gonna be, it will reflect on us as a district as, well, we don't even, we're not being progressive, we're just kind of keeping up, that we are a good enough district that we can do what's best and do what's right. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes visitor comment for this evening. Thank you all for your comments. Moving on to our next agenda item, unless Dr. Mayan has, oh, you're, okay. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent update.
Chris, I have a little time for the cast here. Do you have a minute?
Here we go.
Yeah? I think it's working.
I'm sorry, I was just, the microphone, I was having trouble hearing you, and I'm sure the people at home are. Are we? I see, oh, gotcha, and we're replacing batteries in the microphone. I see, I see. That's good. That's good.
So, all right, we're set. So I have three, three presentations tonight. The first is actually one of the ones that I enjoy giving each year the most. You'll see that on the screen, we have a presentation, and I do realize it's not September 11th, 2023, but this presentation was given on September 11th, 2023, and it spoke about our objectives, our, our administrative objectives for the year. And so that is something we give each year at the start of the year, and then midway or toward the end of the year, we give a progress report on how we have been doing with respect to completing our objectives. So as we run through this, and I thought it important to give the exact presentation that we gave in September, and we update it in green. So as we go through this, you'll see that the same presentation we gave in September's here, but the updates on our progress are in green. So it was September. We wanted to point out the great work that our students did in decorating. A few highlights, and since people are here, Southern Lehigh Intermediate School Number One, Lehigh Valley 30, out of 2154 in Pennsylvania, the middle school, right? Top 2.2%, and the high school, top 9.3%. So addition to all of our great athletes and theater and extracurricular, we have great schools here that we should be proud of on a statewide and actually on a national basis. So each year, we present these objectives that are based on our strategic plan, and our objectives cover all aspects of the district's operation, and I want to thank Dr. Trinkle, Mr. Pepe, Dr. Aick Little, our principals, our teachers, everyone in the district who's contributed to the work that we have before us. So the first objective that we put out for the year was our language arts initiative. We said we were gonna monitor and support prior phases of the initiative, including foundations, GOs, Read Well, which are special education program, benchmarking, and scheduling. And the, the green at the bottom is the addition to the presentation that we gave in September, and, and our report is that we're happy to say that Witten Wisdom has been fully implemented. Extensive professional development has been provided to staff in addition to instructional coaching and classroom support. We've been highly successful in parent outreach. Attendance at our evening event for parents and students to learn about the experience of Witten Wisdom far exceeded our expectations. GOs and Read Well are fully implemented and receiving ongoing support, and we have an ongoing collaboration with grade-level teams across grade-level teams and collaboration with other school districts that have completed the implementation process. So good news to report on our language arts program that was implemented this year with Witten Wisdom. As far as additional curricular initiatives, we said we were going to implement English Language Arts curriculum in grade seven through 12 with a recommendation to the board in early 2024. Board members will remember that we came to you with StudySync at that time, which we're very grateful that you approved. We are successfully implemented the first professional development for our ELA teachers in grade seven through 12, and we're looking forward to a formal launch of this program starting next year. And if anyone, if there are any questions along the way, please just, just stop, okay? We also said in September, we were going to look into a social studies curriculum planning seven through 12, and also Spanish immersion curriculum planning, grades one through five. And our update is that after an extensive and collaborative evaluation process, the board adopted SAVIA. SAVIA is an authentic, international, Spanish-language-based curriculum utilized by native Spanish speakers throughout the world. It amplifies our ongoing efforts to bring structured literacy instruction to all students. Materials have been ordered. Professional development of science teachers and principals. We have ongoing continued efforts toward implementation of PE STEALS, which is our new science standards coming in the 25, 26 school year. Professional development, we said we're going to do professional development and engagement with elementary teachers addressing math fact fluency, and we've had a series of small committee-based meetings, including stakeholder groups, to assess plans moving forward for communication and revision, and we have ongoing updates of our textbook and curriculum, including AP courses, and we've adopted grade six and seven social studies textbook with realignment, of course, content and planned professional development for April 19th, 2024. So good progress, I think we have to report on these additional curricular initiatives. Our, our next goal was public access to curricular materials. We wanted to develop, this is during the year now, develop and implement plans to make curricular materials publicly available on the district's website. This objective is not intended to be intrusive to the work being done by our professionals, and our report is that current efforts within departments under curricular revision engage in a pilot to identify best practice and gain feedback for utility and flexibility, so this objective is ongoing. Public reporting of achievement data, we said we want to build on the success of our prior work in reporting the great achievement of our students and our teachers to the community. Southern Lehigh Administration, as far as the update, presented a comprehensive report of student achievement coupled with a description of efforts to further improve data gathering and reporting in November 2023, and that report is posted on our website. Do enrollment, broadly and repeatedly communicate do enrollment opportunities to parents. These are our goals. The update is that as far as our agreement with L C I C, we've had a realignment with educational pathway opportunities. We've developed a partnership with R I T for their college prep program, and we're very excited, perhaps as early as the end of this month, to come with, to the board with perhaps a new partnership with Cedar Crest College, who are offering through a third-party vendor online courses that our students will be able to sign up to take and receive both high school and college credit simultaneously, and so we'll be hearing more about that, hopefully some final plans for the board to consider in later this month. We said we wanted to offer opportunities for students to take exams. Remember, we actually bought a mobile computer lab for this part of this project, and we did offer CLEP tests in October and in February. Regrettably, there's not been a great amount of interest in this. We're kind of hoping maybe the build-it, you can, they'll come theorem might apply to this. We're gonna keep pushing it and providing the opportunities, but a CLEP exam is, a student could come in and take an exam, and if they're successful in the exam, even if they didn't take the course, they would receive college credit if they had successfully completed this exam. Student services, all right, this is, this is a big multi-year goal. We intend to review current interactions among our guidance counselors, social workers, school psychologists, and outside resources and agencies in providing services to students and families. As far as a quick update, we've had ongoing collaboration and meetings with student service personnel in our district to discuss evaluation and operational effectiveness and efficiency. And we also will be bringing to the board in April a request for you to consider hiring a consultant, the chair of the counseling department at Lehigh University. Dr. Trinkle has secured federal grant funding that's restricted for professional development, so it will not be a cost to the general fund, because we believe this individual is, has a great amount of expertise that will help us not only in our process, but improve the manner in which we serve our students' needs, particularly those students who are at highest risk, because that ultimately is the outcome we wish to achieve for these goals. And, and that, again, should be coming, I think, later in, in this month at our next meeting. As the board is, as the board knows, we're, we just reorganized or reformed the Southern Lehigh Education Foundation. District administration and the foundation board have collaborated to raise funds and provide opportunities for students. I'm very pleased to report that SLEF provided student learning opportunities for students in sponsorship of multiple science explorers events. I think we had one earlier this week, and there's one tonight, again, sponsored by the foundation. And I think most notably, our foundation has paid for all do-enrollment credits for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. So all of our do-enrollment credits in all of our programs, if you qualify for free and reduced lunch, these credits will be covered for you, and the foundation is committed to doing this on an ongoing basis, and I think that really is, is a wonderful example of the, the foundation's devotion to the work that this board and all of our people in the community do. And, and we're soon to start a teacher mini-grant program sponsored by the foundation, where if a teacher has a really cool idea that may need some special funding, they'll put together an application, they'll apply to the foundation, and the foundation, if the application is approved by administration, will provide this teacher an opportunity with funding to follow through on, on some form of a plan. So good things are happening with our foundation. We're very grateful to Mr. Zellner and, and the entire board. Southern Lehigh High School library, we had been talking about plans and alternatives to enhance the utilization of function of the library here at the high school. We want to, we said we would report on options to the board in October of 2023. We have, and we had it on our facility committee, an agenda item, which we did report to the board in broad terms, and then we brought some more specifics back to the facilities committee, and the board will be presented with options to move forward with the library renovation project for discussion and consideration. There may be some reports from the facility committee tonight that would maybe perhaps set us up for some future actions to do some exciting things with the library here in the building. As far as technology, we had a long list. Implementation of internet infrastructure upgrades, this is our switches and all of our internet infrastructure, this was completed. Implementation of server virtualization, this is now completed. Implementation of voice-over-I P phone systems, this is completed. We had a glitch where we had, from our intermediate school, some problems with our 911 that I'm very happy to say has been repaired, so our voice-over-I P phone system is up and running, saving us some very significant amount of money. We wanted to develop and implement new student authentication procedures to increase security and simplicity for our students. Directed technology applications, this started with a very slow start. It was a critical issue, and we now have it partially completed, and the effort is ongoing, but we are in a far better shape than we started the year. We intended to develop and implement multi-factor authent, authentication and related security measures. This is ongoing, and we need to make more progress in this particular area. Execute necessary actions to complete the data transfer and staff training to ensure the transition to Infinite Campus and Fall. This is our biggest task of the year by far. We are transitioning from Sapphire to Infinite Campus. Our staff, led by Mr. Suma, has been extremely hard at work at this data transfer. We're in great shape. And then finally, we want to develop preliminary plans for implementation of Infinite Campus in all departments with a focus on improving data quality, streamlining processes, accessing meaningful information, enhancing internal and external communication. And we are currently in the critical stage of this process. Key individuals have been identified as resources. Training is underway for all functions and will continue. Community announcements will soon be coming out because we're transitioning away from Blackboard announcements into announcements through Infinite Campus, which we think will be much better because as you access student grades and all through an app, you'll be able to also access these messages, just as, but, but far better than a Blackboard. I will tell you, concern is very high among staff, right? Because they're worried, because this is a very, very big challenge, and that's great, all right? Because they're taking, our staff is taking this very seriously. When we speak to the people who are professionals in the company who do this transition all the When we speak to the people who are professionals in the company who do this transition all the time, they said you are in great shape, far ahead of where would you would expect it to be at this point. However, as staff members, they are nervous, they are worried, and I think that's really good news on both sides, and our people are taking this very seriously and working very hard. And we are, according to the metrics of the people who do this, ahead of the game as far as our initiative is concerned. Human resources, we wanted an executive transition. So Dr. Ake Little, one of our goals was for Dr. Ake Little to become familiar with our programs, with our process. This is his first year here, and he has certainly done that. We want to develop and implement a process to review and acquire feedback from staff, administration, legal counsel, and board on proposed policies. We have a policy committee that's up and running. I think members of the policy committee will be the first to say that Dr. Ake Little provides great amount of information and organization to the process. We want to establish and execute a schedule for board review and approval of policies, and we're just about emergent with that, with that initiatives. We want to develop internal processes and practices that will institutionalize approved policies and regulations. And this will be something that will occur as we develop and approve these policies going forward. Again, this is a multi-year activity. Position control is, is probably one of the most important advances we've had in our operations. We, for many years, had separate and distinct payroll functions, HR functions, and, and we really did not have an integrated understanding of who our people are, what their credentials are, where they're qualified, how it links to payroll. So, so position control ha- has been a very, very big and very, very important project that has been going on. Once we complete this, as we're moving forward, we'll be able to do exciting things like checking our roles to make sure that the people that we should be covering with medical benefits are receiving coverage, and perhaps people who may not be eligible for receiving medical benefits are also not on our roles. And, and again, we will be in a much better position to be able to operate efficiently as we develop this position control function. If, if there are questions, I don't want to drone on too long here, but it's been a very, very good, good work by Dr. Ake Little and painstaking because of the detail that's required for this, okay? As far as internal procedures and processes, Dr. Ake Little has transferred the role of open records, and we fulfill fifteen right-to-know requests with new internal processes. We have created fileable Adobe Acrobat files for all onboarding paperwork, so we've we computerized our onboarding system. Instead of having a lot of paper trail, we've eliminated that process. Business office interactions, including benefit administration and payroll. We've foreigner workers' compensation, tuition reimbursement, and paid unpaid leave request processes. And so essentially, we are, what is the word I'm trying to find? Automating, we are automating, we are automating processes across departments that'll build efficiencies, increase accuracies, and provide better services to, to our employees. As far as Title IX, we have not moved a lot in Title IX because federal, federal regulations were scheduled to be released months ago, but are now late. So we're all waiting for that guidance to come from, from Title IX. And we're also always concerned about mandated reporting and the work that's required there. Under facilities, Mr. Pepe, we completed the stadium project. We have developed schedules that we believe are fair and equitable as far as using of the facilities. We've executed a marketing plan, and this again through Mr. Pepe's leadership, that has brought in very substantial sponsorship dollars and completely offset the cost of our scoreboard. We are ongoingly, and we are ongoing in our consideration of opportunities for educational connection to our scoreboard. And as far as the intermediate school, the, the intermediate school project, our exterior wall project has been fully completed with excellent results. We continue to work on unresolved funding issues and present the facility committee and board with opportunities. Actually, we spoke about that as early as, earlier tonight. And we have a high school HVAC project. The project is underway, a demo installation will begin, will begin this summer. As far as prioritizing, we've completed a review. We presented this to the board and to the facility committee, where we have a series of projects coming up, number them down at Liberty Bell with chillers and roofs. And we've also secured and allocated construction project funding. We'll continue to draw down on the loan with interest rates that are actually lower than being currently earned by the district's reserves. Negotiations has been supported, a great work by our negotiations committee and our partners in the SLEA, and Dr. Ake Little, Mr. Pepe, and Dr. Trinkle have been working very hard to support that process. We've built up some additional internal controls and efficiencies in the, in the business office, developed a guide for standard operating procedures. We've expanded discussions with our auditor to include pre and repost audit check-in, so we've leveraged our new auditor. We have expanded cross-training in business office to include payroll with the assistant business director. As far as medical access, we've spoken about this for some time, where medical access was an untapped revenue source here in the district so that as we provide services by our school psychologists, by our counselors, by our social workers, by our special education department, we can actually bill access and gain a revenue stream. Again, that has been untapped. So as far as our progress there, we've had statewide training completed by our administrators and key players. We've also been to the IU. We have a random time study, so we have to go around and gather data on what people are actually doing in their jobs to determine how much of their work can be billable. And we've developed internal procedures for billing, and we hope to be able to send out our first bills to Medicare in the fall of two thousand and twenty-four to take access to, to gain access to this, this new revenue source. We are the first to say that we are dissatisfied with our food service and the quality of our lunches in the district. We have had bi-monthly meetings with the director to review program initiatives and generate new ideas for improvement. Mr. Pepe's developed goals, updated our website. We've tried to improve the menu, we still have work to do there. We have focused on operational effectiveness. I think we're very soon to move away from some of our vendors that are providing our current food and moving toward, for instance, instead of processed chicken, actual whole chicken and some of the stuff that we're doing. So there's a lot of room to go, to grow there, but progress is, is being made. We have to accelerate the progress that, that we are making in that particular area. You've seen this slide before, this is again something we gave back in, in September. It may be instructive as we talk about our next presentation with budget that we are moving into areas where we can, can say that we have some strength as far as building budgets and being able to provide programs to our students while at the same time controlling costs for, for our taxpayers. And finally, go Spartans, together we will continue to strive to make Southern Lehigh School District the best in Pennsylvania in all aspects of its operation. That certainly is our goal. So again, it's, that was a lot of time, a lot of words, we went through it quickly. But I think it is important to know that each and every aspect of our district is expected each year to advance, to do new things, to improve. We're very grateful to our senior administrators and their staffs for the work that they've done. So that concludes this presentation, I'm very happy to take some questions. Yes.
I just want to acknowledge a lot of this heavy lifting that's been happening over the past two years by this administration. I think it's important to talk about the good things as well as other things in the district, and I think this is a time to acknowledge and highlight some of these major accomplishments in my book. And, you know, I just want to reiterate, there was a lot there, and there was probably some tuning out, but just things such as dual enrollment. To be able to have affordability in higher education at the high school level is really important. And I think as things move on, that will take on a life of its own. Student services, the foundation, you know, these things are going to bring additional enlightenment to this school district through funding and other key opportunities. Grant writing, another one. There's been a, a huge improvement in grant writing in this school district, and it shows by what we've been able to garner in our budgets for grant writing and being able to take that second to last slide that showed five years of deficit spending into a surplus. So I commend everybody involved in that. I think Dr. Trinkle is one of the key people in that area, as well as Dr. or Mr. Pepe. Curriculum, there's been a complete revamp of curriculum in this school district over the past couple of years, and there's a lot of work to that. And I, I commend the staff and the administration for putting together strategic goals and making it happen in parallel, not just certain grades, but a cohesive, all-inclusive strategic plan from K through twelve. Facility improvements, I'm on the facility committee, but I could tell you that the work by the administration, Mr. Rohrbach, Mr. Pepe, and the others to put together a comprehensive maintenance plan for this school district is something that was not really in place until now. We need to be able to budget these huge expenses in this school district, and this is the way to do it. They have a five-year plan together with everything prioritized that we can figure out where we move year to year on our budgets and, and making sure that we have air conditioning that is operating and doesn't fall apart during a school year where it could not be replaced easily. So that's an example. Library enhancement is another one, there's been a lot of discussion on that, that's happening. You know, I'm happy to see that we will, you know, at some point have a revamped and enhanced library opportunity in the high school. And I talked about the budget a little bit, but it was a complete turnaround, and we have the ability to do some great things that cost money in this school district over time if we continue to have wise planning, look at costs in an objective way. And then also HR, there's a lot of policy and a lot of procedures and things that have been improved over the past year and will continue, and they're critical for a large operation. There's a lot that goes on in a school district, and all of these elements happening simultaneously. I just, again, I, I know I'm droning on, but I have to commend everybody for this work, and it's a time for it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. And I will acknowledge, I was boring myself as I was going through this, this presentation, but I do feel it's important not only to say what it is we're doing, but then to follow up and say this is what we did. And even though a lot was said, a lot more was done to get here tonight. So, Mr. Boyer, I see, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say, as a graduate of two thousand and nine from Southern Lehigh here, right? It's, it's, I haven't been outside these walls for only four years in college when I was at East Stroudsburg. It's, it's nice to see from what I experienced and what I went through from oh-six to oh-nine and prior years when I was in elementary school. It's nice to see the work that goes in there. Not a lot of people in this room, including the majority of folks here on the board, know all the ins and outs and all the inner details that go into making a successful plan. This is really like playing chess, and it's not always all about the shining objects that you see, that you get as the end result. A lot of it is building blocks to get to those places that you want to go to. And one of the last slides that Dr. Mann showed, it's exciting to know, to be a part of a team here, that we have an ability to do stuff in the future. And as long as we plan to what Mr. Mann said, as long as we plan effectively, it, it's, it's the sky's potentially the limit, which is nice to see from, coming from a Southern Lehigh alum and knowing what we have available here in the community to, to not only just the community, but also the teachers and also the students as well, from a all-around experience here at Southern Lehigh. So it's, it's exciting to hear, it's a lot of the boring details, I'm sure everybody's zoned out in this presentation, but I just want everybody to know that it's, it's appreciated, and it's one of those like grant writing, we joke all the time. It's unappreciated because you don't usually ever win much, but this one you win every day, but it's a lot, it's hard to see in the, in the inner details, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer, thank you.
Dr. Mann, just real quick, is that, is that available to the public?
Will be, Mrs. Lowby's going to post that first thing tomorrow. It was my fault for being late with getting it to her. And then, Mr. Suma, could you help me get to my next presentation, which is much shorter than, than the first?
In the meantime, Dr. Mann.
Yes.
Have chicken, you talked about lunches.
Yes.
Have chicken turnovers been reduced?
No, they're here.
All right. It used to be a sprint, get to the cafeteria for the.
Yes, that's it, thank you. Okay, now. Okay. Next meeting, Mr. Pepe is going to roll out and have every bit of detail on budgets that you ever want to see. Mr. Pepe has developed a very positive, very proactive budgetary process that draws on individuals across the district where we very much listen to needs. And people come in and describe those needs, and they get conveyed, and we've been in a position to try to budget for those needs, right? Now, that doesn't mean we're perfect, but I, I think that, for example, with respect to supporting our arts program, we've made concerted efforts to try to support these programs through our budget process. And, and I, I really think we need to reconcile some of the work that we've been doing with some of what we've been hearing, because that's very important to know, because I, I'm not completely able to reconcile that, but it's work that we have to continue to do, right? Okay, all right, very good, and that, that'll be a future report for us, right? But as far as, as what, as far as my, I'm not going to usurp any of Mr. Pepe's work, but I am going to kind of frame it because while Mr. Pepe has a very specific role in this, so do I. And, and, and in my role is kind of balancing the scarce allocation of resources. That's what the budget is, right? There's only so much money. And then we have to make sure we allocate that money in a way that's appropriate, in a way that meets our needs, because we cannot do everything with a limited amount of money. And that's kind of what I wanted to talk about tonight. So Mr. Pepe is up later in this month. Over the past three years, we've had end-of-the-year budgetary surpluses, as we mentioned before. In each of the last three years, the surplus was larger than the year before. So our trend is very positive, right? Current year budget, June, July is on track to finish with the surplus. Now, we really, it's too early for us to tell, right? Because we still have months to go before it finishes, and then we have a tail at the end as revenues come in. But we have a sense that we're in a very good shape now. We do not anticipate a problem with this year's budget, in fact, another surplus. And as we look forward, and we've mentioned this along the way, we do not anticipate coming to the board for a tax increase for next year because we do not believe one is necessary, right? Because we, this administration has recommended a tax increase, right? No, that, that was not intended as an applause line, that's just, that was, it's true. But we have come to the board and asked for tax increases when we thought it's necessary, and we will again come to the board when we believe it's necessary. But this, right now, we're, we work very hard. Our board has been strongly supportive, and we are in a good spot. And, and Mr. Pepe, you certainly will have those details going forward, all right? But what I think a great conversation, an important one to have is roles and responsibilities, the roles of the board, the roles of administration. And administration will continue to support and build programs that provide opportunities for students. Administration will continue to find opportunities to manage costs through operational efficiencies and staff reallocation. We don't apologize for either of those two. And, and we seek guidance from the board, all right? Because ultimately, board members represent our community and the values of our community, and, and we look to gain your insight into the budget process, which essentially is an allocation of scarce resources. And I wanted to bring to your attention two specific items tonight that often come up to again, gain your insight and at least give you a sense of where we're heading, absent alternate direction from the board. The first is K through three elementary class size. And we have operated over the past several years where if a class size in grades K through three hits twenty-six, all right? We then hire another teacher. So the maximum number that we can get in a class is twenty-six. And then if it hits twenty-six, then we bring someone in. Now, the, the little caveat I'll say is if it's twenty, if it's three people enroll into a class the day before the first day of school, when all the schedules are planned, we're not able at that point to adjust and, and, and create new sections. And we really like to avoid creating sections during the year, but. And we really like to avoid creating sections during the year, but that's the number we've been working on. And some would say that's the good number. Others would say that's too high. What I'll also say is, though, by lowering that number, as registrations come in, there's the potential to have a very quick expansion of the number of people we hire, and it's very hard to predict there. So, so with that, I think maybe I'll pause. There's some questions? No, 26 has been the number I've used for elementary K through three.
Okay, and sorry, I didn't turn on my mic. My question was, is that 26 K through three, and you just answered yes, kindergarten included. Okay, thanks.
Yes.
It's not if one class reaches 26. It's an average in a building, or it's one class?
It's per class. So it's actually, we would not anticipate hitting an average of 26. Because if every time someone hits 26, we hire somebody, then the average is going to be a good bit below, on average, I guess, you'd say, below 26. So that's our trigger, right? Now, it's important to note, too, that it's potentially, it's very possible that we will have unbudgeted expenses. Because when we complete our budget in June, we will have a certain staffing level. But if we have people come in over the summer, we don't say, well, it's 27 now, we didn't budget for it. We just say, we're going to do it. All right? And, and then we would run a deficit, and of course, in the year, a budget's an estimate, and a $75 million budget, as we've been working hard to kind of move ahead, usually that's something that could be absorbed, but just realize that it's something that goes unbudgeted because it's an immediate need as things change over the summer. So does that seem to be reasonable, I guess, is my question?
If you're asking the board, does that seem to be a reasonable target to hit for this budgeting process and for this summer?
And I don't mean the answer tonight, but as we go through the budget process, if, if the board has, wants to, because I would never ask someone to weigh in and make the decision tonight.
Yeah.
This is what we've been doing. It has been discussed numerous times in the past, but every year, this is something the board should be aware that this is the path we're taking, and we're certainly open to direction.
I, I just, as someone who's, I asked the question, as someone who's worked, I'll give you this feedback. As someone who's worked in early childhood and taught some people, I see in the audience tonight, 26 kids in a kindergarten classroom makes me wince. I, I think previously when we had had conversations about, we had had a preliminary pilot type of full-day K program earlier in maybe 2016, 15 here at Southern Lehigh, and one of the data points we took away was class size mattered. And when that program went away, one of the things that was learned from that was that smaller kindergarten class sizes really allows for intense language development. So 26 kindergarteners makes me, I, I'd personally like to see a different benchmark for when we decide we have too many kindergarteners in a class. That just seems like a high number to me. That's, that's my feedback.
Is there a report or something or a data point?
Yeah, we actually talked about this in the education committee. I mentioned it, we, there was, help me out, what day was that? Was it Thursday? We talked about that in the education committee and that some of the teachers who are still employed here in the district now presented that at a board, a number of board workshops and board meetings in the reports, the summary reports are attached to those. We can look those up. I don't have access to the data, you know, the raw data at an administrative building or teacher building level, but I know there were board presentations on that attached during that time.
Thanks.
Yeah, those summaries.
Give me the dates so I can look it up.
Yeah, I tried to quickly search.
Yeah, or somebody who, who would have that?
When I was attending the ed meeting, I tried to quickly look them up. I know Dr. Mann made some notes to look those up.
Maybe Carney, you may have. No, okay, I'll take that offline. Thanks.
When, when I was weighing in about the prior full-day program.
Bring it up later. Sorry.
Okay. So again, as we talk and as we move forward, you know, 26 is the number we're using, but we, you know, administration is flexible, but that's kind of the number we arrived at. 26 is high. Kindergarten first or second, third grade, no question. Right?
Yeah.
It's a high number, but to, to move it, but it's also one that is not inconsistent generally with, you know, what happens in elementary level. You know, we're not going to hit 27 or 28. 26 is difficult, and 26 is the max that we would have here in this class. And, and if we roll down to 22, 23, we'd be talking about a massive number of hiring here, like big time, lots. Like, really, we would have to look at budgets in a different way if that was like what the numbers we were talking about.
And do you have a different elementary standard for fourth through sixth? I mean, that's still elementary, those grades?
Yeah, I think as, I, I think as, but I don't think, as students get older, and same thing in high school here, right? They get taller, they get taller. And, and I, I don't know that we have as hard a fast rule. In the back of our mind, we see 26 as, as a general number that we would like to intervene in. But the, the hard, fast, absolute rule would be a K through three for that, for that number.
Okay, so we don't really have an established number?
Not, not firm, hard, and true like this. Principals will come in and start making the case, hey, if you're doing it in third grade, what's, what's wrong with fourth?
Right.
Right? And, and that's a discussion we have, and generally, we would be sympathetic to that. But, you know, if we have two or three fifth-grade classes and, or six-grade classes, and maybe they're 26, 27, we may be cautious about hiring three teachers there, particularly if we see there's lower numbers in the classes that are coming up.
Yeah, I guess.
It's more flexible of a discussion. At least that's been our approach.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I guess if you're looking for feedback, again, I'd, I'd like to see some number at, at those grade levels as well. High school, when you start passing classes, it's just, you know, how many kids can you kind of, I know there are limits there from a course to course, but
Yeah.
At those, four through six, I'd like to see a number, a cap number on those two, just for planning.
Do you have any best estimates on the next five years of growth in the school district? Because I know a lot of people talk about, oh, it's growing, it's growing, and the schools are going to overflow, but I'm under the understanding that we're kind of at capped at Lower Milford, and each area is kind of filled up, so we're not going to have such a grand expansion.
You know, I, 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 because we have some pretty strict zoning ordinances in Upper Salkin. Cooper'sburg is to some degree landlocked, and there's a lot of clean and green down Lower Milford, that there's not opportunity, I think, for gigantic expansion. Right? When we look at live birth rates, we don't see big jumps at all. We see stable population. However, we do hear and see housing developments in Upper Salkin. We see a housing development plan down in Cooper'sburg, and even actually out by Limeport, we see some some initial plans for growth there. And so one of the things for all-day kindergarten, actually, that we were talking about, if we move forward with the study for that, if, would be to do some demographic studies to see based on housing permits and live births and all that thing. But this came to your point, I don't see enormous growth here. It's conceivable to see very flat growth, but that's more of a speculation than, you know, a factual response based on data.
Dr. Mann, if I could just ask that magic number 26, is that just like an industry standard? Or is that also based on the layout of our classrooms in those buildings?
You know, there, it, it's very hard to find an industry standard, right? When, right, and it depends on who you ask. Someone say, look, if it's, like, they, they did this Tennessee Star study where they want you to have 12, right? And, you know, if you read some of the literature that came out when schools are really having to control costs, you'll see some indications around the 26 level, but there is nothing that says this is an industry standard, all right? And, and I wish it was lower, right? But people work with it. It's not, I don't think inconsistent with what we see in our neighborhood here. You know, so that's just like a number that I came up with based on some facts and grounding that I've been using for a long time. But I am certainly open to people to say it's too low or it's too high.
No, thank you for explaining that. I didn't know if we had like a limitation at Liberty Bell and, and hope well that, that we came to that number.
And if, if we had approached that, I think we'd really be pushing to address whatever those limitations were.
Right.
Because that would be really bad if our facility prevented us from having class sizes we wanted. So. Okay. All right? The next kind of big question, right, that comes up from time to time, is salary placement for new hires. Right? And so Southern Lehigh District, we must be consistent in our approach to establishing a starting salary. This is for professional staff to avoid claims of discrimination. Our current practice, right, and this is since, since I've been here, and this is not new to some of the board members who have heard us say it, right? Is that we start individuals on step one, right, and actually, it's step 14 here, but step one is the first year at the lowest salary, regardless of their experience in other school districts. Credit for past experiences awarded in the event a position is difficult to fill, and there's a minimum of qualified applicants. So if you come here, you get step one, unless you are in a very hard-to-find or hard-to-fill job, and there's no applicants, and essentially, if we don't grant you your steps, you're going to go someplace else. And in some instances, such as elementary education, a top candidate may decline the district's offer. It doesn't happen often, but it does happen. And is replaced then by another highly qualified candidate because we are fortunate in that we have a very high number of people who want to come to work in, in Southern Lehigh. Now, that's not the way it has to be, not the way it has to be. One alternative is to grant candidates full credit for prior experience. Or another alternative is to grant experience capping their, their number of steps at five years. So there's a number of different ways to do it, right? So the question is, like, is the approach you're taking working? Do you have data to support, which I do have the view that we start people at step one here? And so I want to share with you hiring results from last year. Okay, so we hired 13, 15 new people last year. It was a big year for hiring. And I want to show how this column works. This is, in this column, this is the number of years they came to Southern Lehigh with from another district. So for instance, this first candidate came to us with four years of experience. If, but we gave, we did not give them four years' experience, we gave them step one. Now, in this particular case, the district they were working was paying them $70,000 on their fourth step. They come here, they make $69,000. We did not give them credit for their experience, and we had a savings of $840, right? Over what they would have made if we gave them step four, right? And then the next person was on step three. If we put them on step three here, they would be at $58,000, but we put them on step one, so they're at 57 or 20. So as you look down this, I'm sorry, all right? If you look down this list, you see this is the number of years that people have coming to Southern Lehigh. This is what they would have made on our salary schedule had we given them credit for all those years. This is the offer they accepted, and this is the salary that they made. And when you look at the total differential between what, if we had granted their credit as opposed to offering them step one, there is a net savings for the year of $68,000, right? Now, if you look at this one in purple, this particular individual was in a very rare certification area and had lots of experience in his prior district, all right? He was at the top of the scale. We were able to go not to step one, we came up to step 12, and he was able to, and he, he accepted, but his starting salary was at 86. And some would say, well, you know, I came, I didn't get my steps. Well, this person was in very, very high demand, in a very, very hard-to-fill area. Right? And so a few points that I would like to make, right? If you look at this list of people, and then again, these are two new positions because of, I think, one was for class size, because we needed to create a section for class size because it went over 26. And the other is we needed to expand our special education teachers to meet the needs of a growing elementary population. Right? Because there were bubbles going through. But what I want to point out is that people are coming from other districts to Southern Lehigh. Right? Unless you have a one here, right? You are someone who's working somewhere else who wants to come here, and you've accepted the job. Right? And you are coming here in spite of the fact that you are not being credited for your year's experience. Right? You're leaving where you were for 10 years, and you're coming here to go on step one because Southern Lehigh is a great place to teach. And, and the other thing I could say is that if we were to continue with this pattern, right? This $68,000 accrues and compounds. So if we had this similar process next year, the following year, right? All the savings would be additive, and we would enjoy the savings from the previous year as well. So if we were to do this over a period of, say, five years, that would be $300,000 that we could hire more teachers. All right? Not just put in the bank, or I mean, we could put it in the bank, but this gives us the flexibility to expand our staff and have more people working for us. So it's a strategy. I'm not saying it's a perfect strategy. Other people grant experience, but when we look at the data, it's a strategy that appears to be working, and to the extent that people say, Southern Lehigh, no one wants to come here to teach, right? This is the data, and, and I think it makes a very strong case that people wish to come from other places here to work. And, and again, that is the planned approach, but we're, again, that's an administrative point of view, but we're open to the board's thoughts on, on how we proceed.
That, that's a great analysis. I'd never seen it done that before, so thank you for providing that. The question I have, just in trying to analyze a snapshot of data, is with those savings, those savings are just the delta between if we had hired these individuals and paid them their previous step experience versus, is, is that what the 68 is coming from? And how does that factor in? I guess, when we, when we need to fill positions, typically, it's due to retirement of folks who are at the top step. So it would, I think it would also be helpful to see the delta between, I mean, relatively, how much the savings is. So like, when, how many, 13, 15 positions? 15, I see. Well, 13 positions, because two of them are new. So if 13 positions were replaced, what were the individuals, what was the delta? What's the savings between the retirement salary versus the new hire salary? And what would the difference be, like, like, how much value add is this? Because if we had a, a different policy of just giving folks the salary they came to us with, with step, how much more are we saving as a result of this policy versus how much are we saving as a result of retirements and hiring folks who are lower? Does that make sense?
It's an excellent question.
I would, because I would love to see that, because this looks very promising.
Actually, we have it on a spreadsheet. Dr. Ed Little, Dr. Ed Little put that on a spreadsheet.
Okay.
And I said, look, and, and the number is much higher, because when we look at, this is just the, the number of what the person would make if we gave them experience and if we didn't give them experience.
Okay, so this isn't factoring in retirement savings at all. It's just policy savings.
Number, I think you're, you're referencing
Right.
is the difference between what we actually paid in this column and what their predecessor was making.
Which column is that?
No, the, the, we don't, in other words.
That column's not here. Okay.
And I, and I did, I'll tell you why.
Okay.
So each of these people replace them, this is what, this is what we're paying them. This column here, salary offered, okay? And the, the difference to measure the, the efficacy, the efficacy of this methodology of hiring
Yeah.
would be if we gave them credits otherwise. So it's that person's salary versus that person's salary. But, and, and that gives us $68,000.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
We're actually earning more than $68,000 because the person they replaced very likely was at step, the top of the scale.
That was what I was questioning. Okay.
It's $68,000 plus whatever the difference is from their person who was leaving to the person who is, to the actual salary we paid, minus some benefits and costs that go to our retirees. So, but we kind of have that.
Okay.
But, but I, I didn't want to put it in because that kind of complicated the thing, and I was really trying to test the efficacy of the methodology.
Thanks for explaining that, because that, with only that one total figure, I wasn't sure. Thank you for explaining that. That answered my question.
So we had 15 people hired. Do we know how many people left?
15.
Two of those are new positions.
So all of them went to other, like, left to go to other, we're saying that people are coming into our district. There's 15. I'm wondering.
Most of these, most of these are retirements.
Right.
Some of them, I mean, they go for all the various reasons. And most of them are retirements, because people stay here for a long time. Some places move, whatever, and on a, on occasion, we have a person who, for whatever reason, says, I'm, I have a better And on a on occasion, we have a person who, for whatever reason, says, I have a better job at some other place, right? So we are not completely devoid of that. But if you look at the few people we lose compared to the massive number we gain.
Okay.
The it truly works in the favor of Southern Lehigh.
And then you were saying that some people might not come to us if they see, well, I'm not going to get credit. You said some don't.
Some don't.
Do you, do you, do we have any idea?
I think we had one in this, in this, I think we had one, and the person who was, now, again, we had one who, if they left, we'd have to close down a program.
Right.
And they're in purple up there, right? But we had one who was a great person, but also we had some really great people who were second and third, and so we we migrated to that second and third person.
The other thing that we might not know is who's not even applying because they find out about the policy?
Well, we really, apart from tonight, we don't, we don't publicize this. I mean, we're doing it tonight.
Yeah.
A lot of people, a lot of people, a lot of people may go out and say, this is not good. But what I will tell you is, and I think the data bear it out.
Yeah.
Right?
Fantastic.
People come from other places to Southern Lehigh. It's the greatest place to teach because we have talented teachers. We have a great environment. We have an amazing community. We have the best kids in Lehigh Valley. And and people will come here because it's an attractive place to come. And again, we're boiling down to dollars and cents. I I do recognize that there's far more to it than that. But but part of our conversations are dollars and cents, and that's why I'm bringing it to the board.
Sorry, that was my mic. And I think I thought what you were going to ask Tim was, part of this was, I know earlier in this presentation, Mike, you said, we don't apologize for some of the reallocations and positions. Is part of this, some some positions that have retired in the past year or two, we haven't replaced. We've chosen to to reallocate those duties, right? And so I guess I thought what you were asking, Tim, was, is this equal to the number of folks who left? But that's not what you were asking, maybe, but.
But let me try to answer that.
Yeah.
Right? Because we we needed another elementary teacher, and we needed more special ed help, right? And that would otherwise be, you know, maybe $200,000 or plus. But we also, as the board knows, as people have said, we reallocated two positions for a tech coach and moved those individuals into the classroom. And so essentially, the two positions that were eliminated for a tech coach were reallocated to be reduced elementary class size and increased services we provide to special education students.
So then the number of, at least in that particular instance, the number of new hires is 13.
Right.
And the number of positions would be 15 in the reallocation was, so it's basically.
The last two are a wash.
The last two, so it's a tit for tat kind of a thing.
That's exactly what it was. And and so in the end, we lost two tech coaches, and we gained reduction in class size and support for element, for special education students. And we did not lose any people. We did not lay off any people.
I see.
Right? We just reallocated.
So they aren't creation of new positions. It's just.
These are two creative positions, but we had two retirements, and then we reallocated. And then, as a result, we, again, reallocated our staffing to what is arguably, in our view, a more efficient, more student-driven approach. But I understand people may have different views of that whole, that whole thing.
No, thanks.
Is this a, is it, sorry, is this a, is this, through other great districts besides ours? Is this a typical not to offer experiential pay? Oh, fiscally responsible, I get it. I'm just wondering if it's common.
Mr. Carney, I will tell you, if we were here losing people, and those numbers were not what they were, I would, because we're all about doing something, gathering data, evaluating, and then changing, all right? So I would tell you that if if we were scraping, if we were competing against Southern Lehigh, right? I might not take this approach, right? Because I would want to, I don't want to get a competitive disadvantage in Southern Lehigh if I'm in another spot, right? Some places that are in powerful positions, grant credit to people. This is not common, right? I will tell you, for a long time, I've done it this way. And and for a long time, not in other contexts. And for a long time, we've attracted really great people.
My question wasn't, by the way, an argument.
No, not at all, not at all.
I felt like a little.
And and.
I was asking because I'm truly curious.
Oh, my God, no. I think it's a great question.
Not from you, I didn't feel.
I ask the same thing all the time, right? And then what I also say is, if there's a question about this, ask, over five years, could we, how would we do with three more free teachers for free? Or four more teachers for free, right? Because this, these savings accrue for about a decade as people move up the salary schedule. And so ultimately, this, this is a powerful tool. Now, well, I'm talking in an antiseptic way. I'll go back to that again, right? Because when someone comes in and they have step five in their previous district, and they get step one, that hurts, all right? And I I acknowledge that from a human point of view. But, you know, when we look at it, it's something that ultimately, I believe, works for our students and our school district, right? Okay, so that's it. I I was going to talk about tonight committee scheduling and stuff, but I'm done, right? This is, this is it. People want to get to a vote, we want to get to a vote. And 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 they're clapping, to be clear, because I'm done, right? That is the, so let me, let me get out of here. All right? And we'll do committee meetings and schedules another night, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we've concluded superintendent updates. Moving on to curriculum, student, and staff services. It's item four. This is the, and I know Dr. Mayan had talked to, you have mentioned that you had feedback from various board members leading up to this agenda item with the girls wrestling, and that you anticipated a great deal of robust, healthy discussion based on of your feedback.
We're ready.
And so we're ready to open that up. Do you have anything to add to that?
No.
To the discussion before we go into that?
We're grateful to see people out tonight. Also say that, you know, the board has taken this, every member of this board has taken this very seriously, has called, has had many questions, trying to do due diligence. And I'm very happy to answer any questions that come up. But understand, every single board member in this room is taking this this work very, very seriously.
Thanks. So we'll open our discussion, the robust discussion you anticipate. We'll open the floor to girls wrestling.
So so I'm going to kick it off. So I'm an alumni of Southern Lehigh. I'm the sports guy up here on the board. I have a daughter and soon to be a second daughter. I went to East Stroudsburg University, where girls wrestling is a very successful program. And I want to see girls wrestling here in Southern Lehigh and have it as an opportunity for my daughters when they come up through the district in about 10-ish years, give or take. My stance is, in regards to this right now, is we've heard numerous positions about budgetary stuff going on. We've heard numerous things in regards to potential unexpected or unbudgeted expenses. I want to take the chance and make sure that we get this right because there is no concern for fair competition. And I will say right now that I will vote absolutely yes to starting a club sport right now on the spot, so that way these girls have fair competition and have the fair opportunity where they do not have to wrestle against boys in this district. However, from my position as a school board representative, and yes, I am a full supporter of athletics, I do hear concerns about other areas in this district where there may be some, not, I'm not going to say unfair, but that's probably the best word right now. Because for anybody that knows me, my vocabulary is rather subpar. But there's areas where, for me, making a fiscal decision on saying yes or no, I want to see an opportunity that affects and that I say yes to that's not only going to benefit just girls wrestling. I think there's an opportunity, from what we've heard, what I've seen throughout the last year, listening to these board meetings and being present, that there's an opportunity for us to really take a dive in the next couple of weeks here with the budgetary process. Because we do have a goal to bring forth a preliminary budget. Correct me if I'm wrong, Lou, but we want to aim for the beginning of June and have that available for public comment. I want to make a motion to table this until we get through those preliminary discussions. Because I want to see, for me as a new board member and other new board members on this, on this seat, the opportunity and fairness for us to go through and look at it from a budgetary perspective, properly set forth and come forth with the planning aspect. So that way, we make sure we make a great decision and not a short-sighted or nearsighted one that's only representative of one select group. And move that decision to where we can look to propose in a couple of weeks, once we understand a little bit more about the budget, which would not jeopardize, by all means, would not jeopardize any start for a wrestling program come the late fall, early winter timeframe. I want to repeat that. It would not jeopardize that decision. I would say right now, by tabling it and making that right decision and making sure that we have the opportunity to support, we've heard numerous people, I echo every single comment that came from everybody that spoke tonight, from a wrestling perspective to a perspective from the other side of the business of arts. And we heard about the the math counts. I'd like to see holistically what our supporting function is for Southern Lehigh, for all of these groups, to see if there, excuse me, see if there's an opportunity for us to provide support across the board to allow more opportunities for our kids, as well as more opportunities potentially for our community members as well with with an all-inclusive approach. Like I said, I'm asking to just table this just to get through the discussion periods. I said right now, I will vote right now, and it's on record, I will vote absolutely yes to starting a girls' club wrestling program to eliminate the concerns for fair competition and eliminate the concerns for competition against males. That is, that is something that I would advocate for if there's interest. But from a standpoint of standing up a sanctioned sport with funding, I ask for us to table until we get through the next couple of weeks through a budgeting process to see where everything fits as a whole and come forth with a good decision from a budgetary standpoint and planning aspect as well. Thank you.
I don't, I don't want to, let me, just procedurally, let me jump in there. I hear your motion to table. If we have, if we just.
There's not a motion, though. Is there a motion yet? Do we have a motion?
He made a motion to table the item. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, Chris. Yeah, yeah, I'm not jumping, that's you, you jumped ahead, you're thinking the same thing I am. Eric made a motion to table, which is perfectly, perfectly fine. I I don't want to, we're looking forward to a discussion tonight. We're, I think a bunch of us are prepared for a discussion tonight. I hear your motion to table. Can I stick a pin and pause that so that we can continue to have discussion? I don't want to leap right to a vote to table with that. But I hear your motion, and let's let's have a little more discussion. But then if someone else would like to second it, we can, that's always an option. But I don't want to leap right to that because I think, you know, we can have some discussion. But I I just acknowledge and hear you. But I don't want to curtail. I think that's where you were going, Dr. Wayack. I don't want to curtail the discussion.
You can't, you can't table something that hasn't been, you don't have a motion yet.
Oh, it was just as a part of discussion, fine, fine. I hear what he's saying.
And I very, I very much appreciate, appreciate that. I think everyone should have an opportunity.
Absolutely, that's all I'm saying, right? That's what, that's procedurally. So heard, I'm not asking for another motion or anything, just something to table. I'm saying, like, let's continue discussion and come back to that. Let's come back to that motion, that's all. But heard.
Whichever.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I I've been thinking about this for a long time in regards to coming on board. It's been sanctioned for since, sorry, I'm using the dumb mic.
It's been sanctioned since last year. I follow it at East Stroudsburg. I'm an East Stroudsburg alum. Many of my friends, I I have a friend that I played with, or that I played sports here at Southern Lehigh, who was a national champion at Maryland, University of Maryland. I I'm a huge advocate for it. I just want to make sure, and from the standpoint of us as board members, we do have the duty fiscally to make sure that everything fits within the budget. And this was not a budgeted line item in the athletic budget or in the current budget. And I would like to see that added into there so we know what we're looking for. Because as Doc, 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 Dr. Mayan said in that, we don't want to anticipate any kind of tax increases by any means. So we want to make sure that we're making the right decision. Because, yeah, it may be a little bit of money here and a little bit of money there. But before you know it, you end up on the wrong side of the fence real quick if you're making decisions on a whim and not thoughtfully thinking them out.
Mr. Board, do you mind, I just, so this is not for for this year. This is for the upcoming, we're taking a vote for the upcoming year. We haven't yet adopted the upcoming year's budget.
Correct.
Right? So so I, you know, I just don't want it to be misunderstood that it's not allotted for. Because if if we sanction this, if we do approve it, then the administration has time to include that in the budget. And as we saw earlier, the, we've had budgetary surpluses, multimillion-dollar budgetary surpluses over the past two years. And as we saw earlier this evening, the anticipated budgetary surplus for for the, for this upcoming year is is even higher than our previous two, as the administration told us.
Can I ask Lou?
And I under.
Can Lou talk?
I just wanted to clarify that financial.
He was addressing him, so let's let them.
Just to clarify respectfully that financial concern.
No, no, absolutely, absolutely. The way I look at it from the process of, we have this budgeting process. I mean, the doors are opening, the window's opening, like, now, like, right, Lou? Probably within the next couple of weeks. Alls I'm asking for is is that I'd like to see this approved in that budgetary process and voted on with understanding what the implications are for that and for that and for any other decisions that we've heard from other members and that that members of the community have emailed all of us board members about that we've all seen. And we've heard at this, at the podium. So I just want to make sure that we take an approach that is seen as fair, that everybody gets a fair share of what they want from support from Southern Lehigh and ultimately from approval from us as board members.
So my question is for Lou, is there, can you predict the future? Is this something that you think that we would be able to slip into the budget and not have it affect anything else? Or are the tax dollars to the community?
Yeah, depending on what we're talking about, as far as stipends for coaching, as far as uniforms, as far as equipment, I don't think this is going to break the budget.
Lou, I think it's $43,000, I think, is what we were told, forty, between $43 and $45,000 for a junior high and a high school program. Is that correct?
Approximately $25,000 for the varsity and $18,000 for the junior high.
And are those ongoing annual costs or is that startup included?
Should be ongoing.
They are, they are, they are ongoing. Likely it'll be a little less in future years because there's some initial startup costs that go in there.
Right.
But, you know, if you figure $40,000, you're.
About that, okay.
Approving this tonight does not preclude us from approving additional funding for arts and music or academic competition. Am I correct? And I believe the administration is planning that, Dr. Trinkle, Dr. Mayan, with key staff who are responsible for those areas, to accommodate that in the budget going forward. Correct? So voting on this tonight and saying, yes, we're going to approve a girls' wrestling team at the junior and senior high schools doesn't mean we're not going to consider those other initiatives.
I would like to see those other initiatives to ensure that they are part of it. It's one thing to say it, it's another thing to actually.
Then you need to study the budget.
And and, excuse me.
And the history of the finances of this district.
Excuse me, I I said that, with with all due respect, we haven't had the opportunity to go through that budgeting process. And that's all that I was asking for, from to get an understanding and going through that. We've talked, and Dr. Mayan has said numerous times, that there's a lot of information to come through on that budget.
I think you're a newer board member, so you don't have that fund of knowledge. But if you go back through the financial statements and through the history here, I think you'd be more comfortable, as we are, who have been on the board for a number of years. That's just all I'm going to say. Thanks for your comments.
Can I just ask a quick question of Lou? Just looking at the at the budget, and Eric, this may, this may be helpful. I believe there's, the the current budget has approximately $4 million of unallocated funds. Is that part of your budgetary process? Is that a correct number?
There's $4.2 million that's unassigned.
Unassigned, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
In in the, in the budget, so.
Correct.
So you, would you use that for things that come up during the year that that may not be, you didn't previously allocate for?
You would, you would utilize that if you ended up having a concern within the budget year for some major expenditure that wasn't, you know, anticipated. This is not something that's going to, like I said, wreck a budget. I think this is more of, you know, whatever the will of the board is, whatever the focus and support is. And to, you know, Eric's question, you want to look in totality. Typically, you want to look at all of your athletics, all of your clubs, to see, well, what are, what are we allocating for each of these across the board? So like, for instance, you know, tonight, we heard discussion about the drama club and the theater budget. The theater budget was not cut. The theater budget is right now in the budget at $10,000 for the year against the actual spend of $10,075 in '22, '23. And the current year. In the current year, it was increased to twelve thousand dollars, and with zero-based budgeting, every year when the principal brings a budget forward, he's already met with individuals or she has already met with individuals within those areas as to what the needs are. So you may have a particular need in one year that's not going to carry in the, in the subsequent year, like uniforms, for instance, for a particular sport. There's also drama club, which has, as of December, had twelve thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars in it. So that's again, an additional amount of money that that particular club has access to. That's one of the higher budgets for a particular club. Now, when you start talking about making major renovations and additions to that area, such as change in lighting, battens, now you start talking about bigger, you know, facility remodeling type activities, and that's one of the things which we were going to be talking about when I make the presentation, being in a much better position that we have the ability to start looking at bigger projects that have been put on hold while we first looked at building needs and building system needs, like HVAC and things like that. Thank you.
So, so I guess my concern, my question is, is, and if I'm jumping in front of anybody, just tell me to.
You're good. Tim said, no, let him go.
I guess my question is, is, is to, to get to where we want to get to, which is a girls' wrestling program, and in the light of talking about going through and having the opportunity to research and understand the budget, which is rightfully so for new board members, that we should have the opportunity to see all that. Like I said, I'm a sports guy. I'm sitting here with Southern Lehigh baseball stuff coming right from the, from the sports field. I, I would, I would absolutely right now vote one hundred percent, absolutely yes, to starting a club sport, which completely eliminates any concern about fair competition and fair play right now, with the opportunity to vote on school funding sources in the next couple of weeks, once we go through in late April here, beginning of May, and understand from that, that aspect. Absolutely, one hundred percent. And we heard numerous, numerous people talk about the competition and the fairness and having to wrestle males. If you said, if we approve a club girls' wrestling sport, you do not wrestle against males and you do not have that unfair competition. You would wrestle against other programs. You can still participate in PIAA sanctioned events. You still participate in districts. You still participate in states. There is no restriction to competition. And that's what I'm just asking for is, is right now, I'll say yes to that, and all of that goes away, and the only thing we're talking about is a funding source at that point. You have a program, you leave tonight, you have a program, and you could start seeing numbers.
Just clarify.
Yeah.
And then gives us just a couple, just a couple of weeks, just to have a good understanding and voting on, yes, I understand fully what this implication has, not just hearing back and forth and last minute, these are what the numbers are, but understanding from a total budgetary standpoint, that that's what it is. Like I said, I will vote one hundred percent right now, yes, and these girls can go and start advocating, and then we can even start seeing numbers too. I'm sure we have more to the point of, if we build it, they will come. I get it. You start a sport or start a club right now, tomorrow, we can advocate and see numbers, and then you have even more numbers to even say, absolutely, like, let's just move it right to the funding standpoint. We have the money, we have the funds.
Eric, can I? So I, I said, Tim's going to be next. I just want to clarify, you said you were going to clarify, but I wanted to, I know, hold on, I just want to, I just want to clarify. So, Mr. Boyer, what you're saying is, in order to, what you're, what, if I hear you correctly, what you're proposing is tonight, or immediately in the immediate future, you, you're proposing to bring a club sport to assure Southern Lehigh girls that they will have a PIAA place to wrestle such, much like volleyball was a club sport before it became a varsity sport, and volleyball was able to go to states and participate and play and win a state champion just as it would if it were a varsity sport. So you're proposing that so that everybody here tonight knows you will have a place, girls will have a place to wrestle at Southern Lehigh tonight. It's just, we need to iron out the funding of it going forward. Am I hearing you correctly on that?
That's correct, because if you do not, if you do not even get to the process of starting a club sport, you absolutely, the girls can only then wrestle against other programs that have girls on them, so if they don't, then they basically go and they can't actually participate, or they have the option, I believe, to also wrestle males if they so choose wish, but that's not preferred. But where it, where it changes it is by changing it to a club sport, all that's off the table, scheduling purposes, all goes through the athletic department, the, the facilities, all goes through the athletic department, and all the fair play, the girls can wrestle against other programs that have girls. There's no restrictions in PIAA, and that's what I'm saying and proposing, like, I would absolutely vote yes right now, so that way they know they have a spot here in Southern Lehigh.
So, hold on, hold on. Tim has been waiting patiently here. Okay, oh, great, good. I was, had my head turned the other way. Proceed. Thanks.
You should know I'm pretty, pretty patient with these.
Oh, no, you're totally, thanks, Steve. No, I'm glad you guys worked it out.
You're a sports guy. I'm a math guy. I will just say that if you equate forty thousand, forty-five thousand dollars in a seventy-five million dollar budget to a seventy thousand dollar annual salary of a person, that's forty-one dollars, actually forty-two dollars. So in basic math, we're talking about, would you be willing to spend forty-two dollars as a person in their budget of seventy thousand dollar annual salary to do this? That's, that, that's the equation of what we're talking about here from a budget standpoint. That's the only thing, if, if we're talking purely about budget, that's all I'm saying. Purely about budget, that's forty-two dollars worth of the seventy-five million dollars if you equate it to a seventy thousand dollar annual salary. So I just wanted to put that out there.
No, that, that's fine, Steve. I, I completely. I, I completely understand the numbers from the purpose of what we've heard, what we've seen in our emails that have been sent to us about other groups and stuff. Like, I would like to see the, I would like to understand a little bit more about, is it real or not, one, what we're hearing, and two, if it is, if we do then start talking about numbers, do we have the opportunity where we can then go ahead and financially approve wrestling, but then also bring forth stuff for robotics or theater or some of those others? And I'd love to see that as an all-inclusive, like, we could talk through that in the budget and know what we can be willing to spend, and then maybe we come out of it of, we come out with a club sport, girls have the opportunity, and then we move into the process of other groups have the opportunity to, to talk, or, or, sorry, to talk, to.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
Can I clarify one?
Uh, Tim, Tim's next. He's saying yes, so go for it.
So the only thing, so I, I appreciate the financial talk, but I also want to talk a little bit, just really brief about messaging. So a club sport, per our policy, is a board-approved sporting team or organization that holds regular practices. It may participate in contests, but is not recognized by the Board of School Directors as a PIAA sports team program by us. So my concern is also with messaging. What are we telling these girls if we cannot say, well, we recognize you as a true sport? That's, that's our definition currently. So if, if, if we, if we take your advice and we vote on it as a club sport, we're telling these girls here, we're telling this community that we, we don't really support it by our own definition of a club sport.
And we talked about changing.
We're gonna, we're gonna be here a really long time if we clap after every comment. I appreciate it, but if I could, if I could ask the crowd, the board's just talking amongst ourselves now. We have your input and feedback. I, I appreciate your sentiment. We'll just wait for the clapping, but if you could keep it down, we'll be here for a shorter amount of time. Mr. Boyer?
But we're, Chris, we're, we're not talking about, that, I get your, I get your stance from a messaging standpoint. I just said that by advocating to start a club program, that opens up that door to start building that theory on, if you build it, they will come. And I said, only for the next couple of weeks, just to go through and get an understanding of this, and also to vet out all of the responses that we got in email from not just wrestling, but all of the responses we got from other community members and organizations within the district, and that we also heard tonight in other board member meetings, or other board meetings, just to see if there's an opportunity where we can come forth and we can put a good, all-inclusive decision behind funding girls' wrestling, in addition, looking at other avenues and other groups that we can also show support for too.
I, I just, I don't want it to seem like this is a, a new discussion. This is a, we've certainly discussed wrestling since February. We've also discussed supporting the arts, which I really truly feel the majority of the board, myself included, supports that. And, and I really truly feel and know we can do both. I mean, the, 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 the financial footings that we're on now are so much stronger in order to do both. So they're not mutually exclusive. You know, I just want that to be a, a point there. It's not mutually exclusive. It's not one versus the other. It's not that this is faster, you know, I, I get it that we want to support all, and I think we, we really do, and I, I know we can't, we absolutely can't. It just so happens that, you know, it takes time to, to hire coaches. It takes time to recruit, and, you know, we, we have already, quite honestly, we've already delayed this vote. You know, I asked for this to be here last month, and, you know, respectfully, the policy committee asked to review a policy, which they did, and I thanked the policy committee. They asked the solicitor. The solicitor clearly stated that our current policy, one, two, three dash two, does not preclude us from voting on, as it's written here, a motion to approve the creation of a district funded, does not have to go to a club. It does not have to go to a club.
I'm not saying.
So if we really support, if we truly support girls' wrestling, if we truly support, you know, these young women and these girls in our district, we will do the right thing.
Okay, I, um, just to clear up, I was talking to Dr. Mayan here, kind of on the side. Two things. One, that policy is currently being worked and workshopped in the wording, and one of the things I was going to report on as a policy committee tonight is our progress on the one-twenty series, and nothing would preclude at this point in time either the creation of a club nor its immediate move, movement to varsity either tonight or at a future date weeks from now. What I had just asked Dr. Mayan was, from a technical point of order standpoint with the agenda, because, just, just putting this out there for the board, because wrestling is currently on the agenda, and because the creation of a club sport, in this case, we'd be acknowledging a PIAA club but not expending any money. Dr. Weig, in February, you made a motion to put girls' wrestling as a varsity sport on the agenda, and the solicitor and I consulted and said, we can't because that's a huge expenditure of money. We can't do it. But I'm just saying, in this case, this is something we could put on the agenda and vote on tonight so that girls would know that they had a PIA. I'm just letting you all know as an option, it's viable, even though Chris's, yours wasn't in February, this is because it's not committing funds, and because wrestling's on the agenda. So one, we can do that. And two, part of the language we were working on as a policy committee about, like, what are we telling these girls? We're working on that language now. And I think what's great is, we have these girls and these, this community members in front of us tonight, is the audience, and they're hearing this. So if the message we're sending is, we recognize you, you are PIAA, you are supported, just like we had a send-off for that boys' volleyball club team to go to states, like, so I think the message is, we're all messaging this right now, the policy you referenced, Mr. Boyer's comments about, and solutions that you, Dr. Weig, and Mr. Boyer are both offering, that's, I think, the messaging we have tonight. So all of those things are possible. Mr. Carney?
Yes.
You, you had something to say, and thank you for generously waiving your time. Go ahead.
The reason I let everybody else know is because sometimes I am long-winded, and I really did, as a new board member especially, put a lot of thought into this. We were getting a lot of communications, verbally, written. I appreciate everybody that wrote on both sides of the issue. Actually, I didn't see a lot of both sides of the issues. I saw a lot of people supporting girls' wrestling. It was the funding part of it right now that I felt some disagreement on. I especially want to thank all the students that spoke up. So I have written down five Ps that I just, are concerns of mine. One of them is not politics. I, I saw that thrown out there. It's not politics. First principle, thanking everybody again, I support girls, I support wrestling, I support girls' wrestling, but that does not necessarily mean I vote yes for all the things that I agree with in principle, because it would be costly after a while. So there has to be some kind of balance. Policy-wise, even though the solicitor said it was clear, I personally have not seen anything. I did not hear her. I did not ask questions. I don't know the tone, if it was a strong opinion or like, eh. I had some Title IX implications if we don't pass something. I still had questions for the solicitor. I thought, I, I forgot that she's not at the first meetings of the month. Procedurally, the, the next P is procedure. I wasn't, I thought, my understanding of the beginning of the month meetings is that it was more of a workshop, discussion, information, introduction of items, and at the end of the month is where we do important votes. For example, I'm sharing my committee report tonight. I have items for the board to vote on, but I purposely was waiting until the end of the month to introduce as voting items, because I thought that's where most of the voting is supposed to be. And this is a pretty big vote. I, I put it on the, I, I agreed to put it on the agenda with the thinking that the solicitor would be here and that this would be a discussion, and I'm sorry if I misunderstood the intent of what this was about. I do have a lot of questions that I don't have answers to. Process, I don't know what guidelines we have for approving or removing sports teams in, at this point. If it's a build-in and they will come and potential participants, I fear we could be opening the door to any sport, any club wanting to be recognized and supported financially by our district, whether they're PIAAA or not. So should we sponsor that? Like, what are the guidelines? And I haven't seen any guidelines on what we use. Is it the more people that show up to talk? Is it, I, I just don't know the guidelines, and I say that as a new board member. I don't know the guidelines on how, besides looking, looking at everything and figuring it out. Price-wise, and this is where I think I agree with Mr. Boyer, I haven't seen any documents yet on the breakdown of the cost. I've heard it, it'll probably cost about this much, but I haven't seen anything. I haven't seen how this fits into the overall budget, as Mr. Boyer pointed out. I've, I don't know if there's going to be any staffing cuts, not that it would pay the whole salary, but it would pay some of it. If we're going to go with, it's a small percent of the overall budget, there's going to be a lot of clubs coming, using that as a precedent, I fear, saying, well, it's only forty thousand, maybe it's only thirty thousand, maybe it's only twenty, only ten. And we're, if we're going to say, if we're going to use that as the standard, that it's only a small slice of the budget, I'm afraid, again, of opening the door to a lot of other things.
What other club sports are, are college opportunities?
No, I want to ask one question.
No, Ms. King, we're gonna let, we're gonna let him.
No, I'm asking a question.
But I'm in the middle, I'm still speaking.
What other college opportunities are there for the girls? It doesn't make any sense. There's no club sports right now that offer amazing college opportunities for the girls.
We're gonna let him finish his statement first. Thank you.
So the other thing was, we heard about a lot of other clubs, the Math Counts, Chess Club. There's a, a whole list of things that were emailed to me, and finally, there's, there's a National Federation of State High School Associations that talks about examining approval when you're looking at sports programs. Do you have enough student interest? It seems like there is, but I have, I haven't seen numbers. I, I apologize. I did see some numbers. Are there enough athletes for the first year or two? Neighboring schools, I didn't know, and this is again a naive, I'm not into the high school sports as much as some other people in the room, but right now, I don't know if this is true or not, but it looks like there's one team in our Colonial League.
Sixteen in the district.
In the league.
Sixteen in district, eleven.
Yeah, I know.
Sixteen district.
But I was talking about the Colonial League. I thought, and again, I said, I'm not sure. I saw Palmerton. I saw District, there's eleven or twelve.
Tim, wait, 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 wait. This is not a back and forth between the audience and the board, okay? We are not, he is not.
No, I said, I'm not sure, and I don't know.
Sixteen in district.
Mr. Carney, would you like the board to answer the questions? Are you looking for these questions to be answered?
I said, I don't know. I'm not involved with this sports as much, but I thought, when I looked at the.
Hold on, don't talk. We're gonna, we're, this is a conversation, as Dr. Mayan predicted, it's going to be a robust dialogue and a long conversation here. I would appreciate it if the audience was just quiet enough so that we could all, Mr. Carney is not looking for a back and forth or questions to be answered, and he is going to, he's gonna finish his statement, and these are the questions that he has in his own head.
So I, I was, what teams are in our league, the Colonial League? I saw Palmerton was approved in June twenty-three, and I didn't know if there were others. I do see how many are in districts, but I wasn't sure who we compete, and this is naive, this is, I don't know who would be, we would be competing against and what the travel would be. would be. I worry about the time, and this is in the guidelines that they, they suggest, the timeliness of the request in relation to the budget cycle and the expense to the district and the participants. And to me, this seems to be something that we are doing in isolation outside of the entire budget process. I'm hearing that there's money. I'm hearing that it's not a lot. But other clubs, I think, could make that argument. And so I'm afraid that we're treating this in isolation. So when Mr. Boyer says, maybe club route temporarily is route, I'm all, I would be for that. If it was, I wanted to hear the discussion tonight, but there's a lot of answers, as you can tell, that I need to educate myself about and find out, talk to the solicitor. And so as of right now, I couldn't say that I have enough information from the budget side. I haven't seen anything for next year. I haven't seen a thing. We're going to be presented, I heard, at the end of the month. So at the very least, I'd say, let's hear the, the budget information. So that's, I'm sorry I went last. I had a lot to say, but.
No, I'm going last.
Yeah. No, I'm sorry, I'm in the line.
No, all right. Thank you. The, no, and I hear, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Carney. There are a lot of questions that we don't have answers to.
I apologize to anybody if I said something inappropriate. I, I was speaking from my personal experience. I respect everybody's opinion, and I appreciate you for being respectful.
Thanks. Okay. I saw that Ms. King hasn't had a chance to speak, and you would like to speak next. Go ahead.
I just want to say, like, I'm completely flabbergasted, because I've been on the board over two years, and even prior, I've heard nothing but about equity and being an equal representative for many different groups, but especially girls. I, I can't believe this vote is not, I can't even believe we're having a discussion. It should be 9-0. We should be, if these girls came to us and said that they want a team because they don't want to participate with boys or for whatever reason, they want to do PIA double A, and they want a team, that's all we should hear. And we should absolutely do everything in our power to get them a team tonight for next year. Like, the fact that we're even discussing this is unfathomable to me. It's about equality for these girls. You know, Tim mentioned other club sports, like, why are we, that doesn't even make any sense. There's no other club sports except for girls and boys coed soccer, and there's no college opportunities for coed soccer. What there are college opportunities are for, are these girls. And I'd like to be the board member that puts them through to get those scholarships. I thought we were all about putting our kids forward, and this does not seem like wasting time starting a club team does not seem like a good opportunity for these girls to get psyched up and start getting ready to compete with the other schools that already put their teams in place, that are going to be putting their teams in place. And as far as, like, my daughter was in theater. I love theater. They put on an amazing show every year, and no one, everybody can participate who wants to participate in theater. There's plenty of opportunities, and they always put on an amazing show, and they always get people to go to the Freddy's. The, the robotics club is, was, might go to Nationals. I mean, they have a club. That's the thing. They have things that they're ready to do that are, they're doing. These girls don't have their own team. They've had to suffer and be a part of the boys' team, and now it's time to separate them. And that's all I have to say.
So if we create a club sport that does exactly everything that was just brought forth?
But we're not really, then the school isn't supporting these girls. They're self, they're self-supporting themselves. So all that really does is just separate them, but they're not, I want to show them that we're going to support them. That's what the equity is. If there's a boys' team, there should be a girls' team. If we're paying for a boys' team, we need to be paying for a girls' team. That's what the definition of equity is.
Mr. Mon, did you want to, Mr. Mon, did you want to say something? I thought I saw you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things quick. You know, number one, there is a safety issue. That's one of my concerns, but we keep talking about the budget, and I will just continue to maintain, we're talking about a very small amount. And the other thing is, with regards to theater, I just want to make a comment about that. We've been discussing over two different facility committees, starting last year, about getting a capital plan together for what needs to happen in, in the arts. There are two different things with regard to theater and, and the arts, one of which is expenses and maintenance. There's another one to be said with regards to capital. Maintenance happens in the budget as an expenditure when there is something needed. The capital, if we're doing extensive investments, takes time to plan, study, get approvals, architectural plans, suppliers, quoting, all of these things. They take time. And we're already starting that process to figure out exactly what happens with regards to capital investment. So I, I'm, I continue to be a little bit concerned over the past few meetings with regard, regarding what I hear from the community and what I hear from administration. And there seems to be a disconnect there. So what I would, and this is getting off track for a minute, I would, I would charge the administration to connect those dots so that we can explain properly what exactly needs to be done from an expense standpoint to fix issues, and then also the capital. I think they're separate items. Wrestling is separate from this. It's already in process, and I will tell anybody in this meeting here that I am a proponent of investing in arts and STEM. Those things are vital, and I firmly believe in our budgeting process, we have room for all of these items. And I just think, at this point, we're going through the wrestling vote. I think we should stick with that. I'm wholeheartedly for voting for a team sport. It doesn't affect our budget in the ways that are being described. And I would challenge the other board members to talk to Mr. Pepe and, and look at those numbers, because, again, it's $40 out of a $70,000 salary. Thanks.
Thanks. Ms. Torba, you did, oh, I'm sorry.
You're welcome to go.
Go ahead. I mean, if you want, go ahead, go ahead.
You were ready to go.
No, I said, I'll go ahead.
First, I'd like to just thank the policy committee for your approach and thoroughness to review the policy and be, being cautious, because we all felt, uh-oh, we might be in violation, and we don't want to be in violation. So I'd like to recognize the policy committee for doing that, bringing it forth, that we would not be violating. I am a strong supporter of programs and extracurriculars that support student growth and development. Eric likes to say he's a sports guy. I mean, I mean, I mean, come on. I mean, I watched women hoop before it was cool. I'm a big advocate, and I, I'm uber-excited for girls wrestling to become part of our district's program. I, the benefits of sports and those teachable moments go beyond the classroom, building the confidence of our young women and empowering our young women. I, I support it, and I thank everyone who has put the time and effort, because it does take time to do all of this and to come forth. And for the young ladies who spoke tonight, I know that takes a lot, but I can't even imagine, if that's hard and you go on the mat, I mean, you're slaying all day, right? Fifth grade term.
You're seeing that as a basketball player, so that's pretty good.
I, I know. I mean, I come, I'm a product from the 70s and 80s. So we watched WWE, Hulk Hogan, my siblings and I. I was Mel Mascheris. Now I'm date myself. But having said all that, I, I do want to recognize, yes, we are new. There are four of us that are new to the board, and we are going through budget season, and we need to learn a little bit about that in more detail. It's important to recognize, we do, and Ms. King, you did mention it, we have middle school coed soccer right now, and it's in year two of being a club. And that's because the school districts in the Colonial League don't have girls and boys. They only can field coed. It's important to recognize, it was summer of, I think, 2022, the organizers of coed soccer came forth, just like many of you are here today in the room, and followed the process on how to make that a club. They read the policy, oh, it has to be a club. They didn't go pursue a lawyer to pursue their efforts. They raised money for the past two years, and they're in year two. So I would just ask, where does that lead them? And I would ask that administration, please notify those organizers so that they are aware of what could happen for their sport, too. And I would ask, maybe in a similar lane as Mr. Boyer, give administration time to notify those soccer organizers and bring it forth in the next two meetings so that they have time, because they might want to be in the same position to become a district-funded sport. I would ask administration to do that and give us the proper time to reach out to that organization. There were 40, maybe 50, 40 to 50 students who tried out for coed soccer this week, I think. That's, that's my share. We are learning. Be patient with us. And I think we're going to learn a lot more in the next few meetings. And I don't know, and I'm learning, how do we then say yes? Reach out to soccer. They come to the table. It becomes that vote again. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. I think everyone has had the opportunity to speak at least once. I think at some point, we need to wrap this up. I just saw Dr. Mann pull his mic towards him, if that's an indication that he wanted to say something. I also wanted to.
I asked questions, but I didn't have.
Sure, sure. I'll loop back. I was just saying, at some point, we need to conclude this conversation, but Dr. Wayack, yeah.
Maybe I could speak in broad terms about the budget. And I think that's a very important thing. And, and ultimately, administration will respond to whatever the board wishes to do because it is your budget, right? But I'll tell you some pitfalls that I have observed over time, right? And that is, if board members, in the best of intentions, put themselves in the place of approving individual line item programs, the only thing you will ever do is say yes or no to line item programs. Because, while we've identified a handful tonight, all right, the, the only thing we do every day of the year that we're working is to identify what we need and what we don't do and to prioritize. And if, if, if we start to say, and the concern is a legitimate one, well, we do it for one, we do it for the other, and off we go, that's, that's legitimate, all right? And, and it may be legitimate to say, look, Southern Lehigh has more sports than any other school district in the Lehigh Valley. We're not doing anymore, right? Or it may be that we, we apply a very specific analysis, absent a policy that tells us exactly how to do it, which we do not have, but the policy says we can decide. And in some instances, yes, we have a lot of sports. This one is no different than the other. I, I would suggest that, and I'm not trying to advocate, right, that from a value point of view, what has occurred recently with girls wrestling is different than some other sports, because the, girls wrestling did not exist before. It just was created in the last year. And we do have the challenge of girls competing against boys, which is not duplicated in any other scenario that we may be encountering here as a board. This is, I, I really do think that this is a one-off situation rather than something that is like opening the floodgates, because, believe me, I, I say no more than anybody here. I do. And I say yes, too. But I am very conscious about saying yes because of the implications it has otherwise. And I, you have no idea how much I respect that and how much, actually, I like to hear it from, from board members, because these things say yes and cause problems, right? But I'm saying there may be some justification to say that if the boys' soccer, if the coed soccer, or the astronomy club, or something comes along, that this particular issue is a one-off and, and not really consistent with these other programs that it'll be saying. So we also make decisions about what to put in the budget during the course of the year based upon values. Administration does that, right? Now, if at the end of the year, the board doesn't approve the budget, we cannot cut the grass, right? Much less have girls wrestle. Like, everything stops if we don't have a budget, right? And within that budget, we will talk about processes, and we will about hearing voices, listening to voices that people raise. I think that administration may have a very strongly different view than some of the, the things that were expressed tonight, but to Mr. Mon's point, we have to justify that to the board and say, hey, are you really listening? Are you letting things go deteriorate for one group and not supporting another? Those are questions we'd be very happy to try to answer, but perhaps not reviewing line items, because ultimately, I think that's in no one's interest, because I think it's better when administration is kind of working as a screen to the board in that area. So, again, I just, I, I don't, and, and because we approve one thing or another, doesn't mean that that somehow impacts, we look at everything in its totality, we look at everything on its merits, and what we do in one is not necessarily what we have to do in another. And ultimately, of course, it's the board that, that makes these decisions with respect to process and, and value judgment. So I don't know if that was helpful or harmful. I'm really not trying to advocate, but just maybe frame this in a way for the, for, you know, budgetary and programmatic considerations, and, and I thank the board for the opportunity to do so.
Ms. Kamen, can I be recognized?
Yes, please, Ms. Cruz. Hold on, hold on. We're going to adjust your phone to be near a mic. We're good now. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. I don't want to duplicate anything else that's already been said. What I wanted to bring up is something that we talked about in the policy committee that we'll talk about as a board when we actually go to look at the policy. But one of the things that I had some heartburn when we looked at 123.2 was the entire idea of a club sport. And I had a concern that club sports versus varsity sports, since almost for like a two-tier class of sports. And the policy committee, in many reviews of this policy, will most likely provide a draft copy that will remove the club sport designation. I hope that's okay to share, Emily, because I know that we'll do committee reports later.
It's just, by virtue of the order, yes. Go ahead, Candy. That, that is, and, and the proposal, I was thinking the same thing in my head, when Mr. Boyer proposed a SCOP gap for a few weeks. So that policy would not yet be approved in that interim.
Correct. And I just want to share that perspective, because I do have a concern around the idea of approving it as a club sport, because I feel like there is personally an equity issue. If we're paying for the boys' sports, I really feel like we should pay for the girls' wrestling as well. Just my own opinion.
No, the, the, yeah. I'm glad you brought that up as a policy committee member. Later on, we will have committee reports, and essentially, the policy committee is going to report out that their recommendation that was going to be for board discussion and consideration was, because of the two-tiered system Ms. Cruz identified, elimination of club. However, I understand why Mr. Boyer tonight, you know, introduces a SCOP gap between the point of, you know, letting, trying to let PIA double A girls wrestling know that they are supported here. And, and that's, has not yet been brought forward in a committee report, but yes. So thank you for weighing in on that, Ms. Cruz. I think at some point, we need to wrap up this conversation. What I have heard so far is universal support for girls wrestling at a PIA level from every board member. I don't think I've heard anyone say they're not in favor, but the only caveat I have heard is new board members, and I guess, yes, new board members saying, we have yet to be through a budget process and yet to see a line item for all of these different things that we as board members have heard appeals about. So that's where I think we are in the conversation right now. Dr. Wayack, did you have an additional? I'd like to wrap this up. Did you have something else before we try to figure out how to wrap this up?
No, I, I would just like to, to, you know, recognize that 15 months ago, we sent a letter, you know, in support of, of girls wrestling. But that, you know, that letter, unfortunately, it really didn't mean anything other than, you know, we supported, you know, greater equality. you know, we supported, you know, greater equality in an unequal sport. But what really counted to get over 100 schools to sanction girls wrestling was actually creating the team. And that's what's, it's the action, it's not just the words, it's the action. So while I thought we were early supporters, we were not, we're not really early adopters. One hundred and eighty-three school districts in Pennsylvania have officially committed to a girls' wrestling program. Sixteen schools in District 11, Tim, sixteen schools. Neighboring districts Quakertown, Palisades have an official team. Okay? High school junior from Palisades, just one state. There's five, five teams in our conference, Palisades, Catawba, Northwestern Lehigh, Penn Arjo, and Palmerton. So five of them. Okay? It's the fastest-growing sport in the high school rate, in, I'm sorry, fastest-growing high school sport in the country. Wrestling teaches life skills. Physical fitness, strength, muscle development, weight management, balance and coordination, mental toughness, discipline and focus. These girls have been very disciplined, waiting for this, waiting for this vote. Respect sportsmanship, these are skills that we should value and prioritize. This is our opportunity, this is our opportunity to break barriers, as Mike always liked to say. And I really hope, and I would like to make a motion, to approve the creation of a district-funded girls junior high wrestling team to begin competition the 2024-2025 school year, as listed in A. I'd like to make that motion.
Okay.
Second that motion.
Motion and second. The, and we also have, I said earlier, that Mr. Boyer said he wanted to have a conversation around tabling as well, so we have all of those on the floor.
We currently have a motion, we only have one motion on the floor currently.
Yeah.
No, 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 that's, no, no, we have a motion.
You wait, wait, stop, we're going to speak one?
We have a motion, and we have a second, and I want to call the question.
You, no, I did not get a chance to speak. We started this conversation by saying that Eric Boyer wanted to table it, and I said, you know what, instead of having a motion to table and a second that would not allow for discussion, we were going to have discussion. Dr. Wayack, you are now cutting that option from him off entirely, and I will not allow it.
I'm not cutting him off.
No, the motion.
Currently on the floor.
No.
No, 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 we have a motion, we have a second.
We do.
Everyone's had a chance to discuss, and we've had a call to question.
Except me. I have not had a chance to speak. So, exactly. So, what I have heard, I have already said what I have heard. As a board member who is not new, as a board member who has been on this board when we made a sport a varsity sport, I will say that I think inserting these items into a budgetary process is very important. And I do know from sitting at this table for years, that if you do not plan for it, it won't happen. I appreciate, and I fully support, girls wrestling. I want there to be PIAA girls wrestling at Southern Lehigh. But I also, as someone who is sitting on the board and tasked with allocating resources equitably to all of our athletes and all of our academic teams, we used to have math counts, we used to have those academic teams, and they were, they were, they were shut down. I believe the timeline was coincided with COVID, and once we got up and rolling with everything else, they were just never brought back. And if we don't plan for those, I don't see an avenue for them to be brought back. And we have heard other board members, over the months and over the years, ask for funding for the arts. And it has never actually made, you know, into a line item discussion. And I think there is something to be said for hearing here tonight, that we support, I support PIAA girls wrestling, but I cannot consider it in a silo, or in a vacuum, or in exclusion to the other activities that we heard asked for tonight. And all, all we're asking for, all I've heard new board members ask for, is what I also have not seen, which is, I don't know if, for instance, our staffing suggestions are going to include replacing a school guidance council at the elementary level, I don't know yet. I don't know how many IAs between last year and this year are going to be approved, which is, you could probably have two IAs for an entire, full-time IAs for the cost of a wrestling program. And I am not, please, don't interrupt me.
Have you asked the superintendent, though?
Please, we, I have not seen, I have not seen budget for contracts of our computer programs are expiring, and next year, we will be without technical assistance to, you know, replace those. And we don't yet know the budget, we're in a new year for technology, and we don't know what the budgetary line is going to be. There are many unanswered questions, and I'm in favor of girls wrestling, but I would like to see how we are going to account for and pay for all of these other items. That's all. So we have a motion and a second.
We have a call to question.
And we have a motion to table.
No, we don't.
We did. So.
So he made a motion about.
Chris.
Without the motion even being on the table. So you can't table a motion when it wasn't even, you can't do that.
That's fine.
You just can't do that. No, no, that's a procedural, you can't do that.
Chris.
No, no, no. So he made a motion to table something that wasn't even, it wasn't even motioned.
So to be clear, yeah.
I have a second, and I have a call to question. We need to vote.
So you're saying you have a motion and a second and a call to question, and you're eliminating the opportunity to table entirely? You're taking that away? Wait a minute, that's what you're doing? How are you not taking that away? You in the breadth of, no, in the breadth, I'm going to, this is, this is done, we're not doing this. In the breadth of a minute.
This is procedurally, it's completely incorrect. You cannot table something, there was no motion on, there was no motion to table.
Fine.
No, so you, so.
Fine, Chris. In the span of thirty seconds.
His discussion about tabling is, it's non-procedural. I'm sorry.
In the span of thirty seconds, you had a motion, a second.
We have to discussions.
You, you had a motion and a second and a call to question without a breath in between, and you know exactly, you knew exactly what you were doing, I'm not, no, so.
I called the question.
Great.
Okay.
We have.
We have a vote, we have to take a vote.
We have a motion to table.
You can't have a motion to table before.
So.
You can't have a motion to table.
Do we have a second, do we have a second on the tabling?
No, 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 you can't do that.
Chris, I'm doing it. If we had a solicitor here to argue this, and I'm not going, listen, this is not the letter of the law, this is the spirit of the law. We started out, if that was your intent, no, I'm not.
This is Robert Trolls, I'm sorry.
Do we, does anyone want a second to motion to table?
You can't table something that wasn't.
What about what I said before in regards to.
Withdraw the table.
We see Claire's.
Yeah, we need a microphone.
What about having the option on, can we have the option on the table to, I know what it says on here, but can there be an option on the table to where we throw the option for starting it as the club for right now, and bring this back in May for a full approval? Is that an option, based on how it's worded on the agenda, to change?
To change this? So what we would have to do is, we have to take care of this first. So we would have to vote this down, or vote to table this, one or the other.
You would have to vote mine down. You would have to vote the current, there is, I just want everyone to know, there is a motion, a second, and a call to question on the floor right now. That is what we should be discussing. So in order to do what you want to do, which is treat women as a second-class citizen by.
No, no.
No, by not.
Chris, 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 Chris.
By, no, 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 you don't, you don't get no.
No, wait, you just said, no, we're not going to insult each other.
For girls' sports, when you're going to pay for boys' sports, for this particular sport, boys' wrestling and girls' wrestling.
I didn't say that we would not. I did not say we would not.
That's what you're asking for.
I did not say that we would not, Chris.
That is what you're asking for.
Chris, I did not.
All right.
Chris.
We all had a chance to speak, let's vote, the original vote, let's vote.
Let's vote, let's vote.
So the way we would have to go about that would be to take care of this first, and then introduce the motion to create a club team, like you said. That's how we would handle that. Tim?
This is just like a point-of-order question. Just telling where I'm coming from, I don't mind taking the vote, but when you said, put a pin in it to his idea that we table it, I thought that meant that we were going, for the purpose of discussions, my understanding was that we were going to come back to the table of the motion to, it wasn't a motion, it was his idea, he goes, I would like to, and put a pin in it, we had discussion, I thought we would have been coming back to that, because I also said, that's what I would like to do.
So, but technically, when he said, I would like to motion to table it, that was part of the discussion.
That's why I said.
So we discussed, I mean, in Robert's rules, right, everyone had an opportunity to discuss. I have a motion, I have a second.
I don't mind.
After everyone has had an opportunity to discuss, I call the question.
Yeah.
Okay, so really, now, the only thing we can do next is vote, is vote upon the motion on the table. There's only one motion on the table, and we have to take that vote.
I was just saying, what my understanding was, I said, I'll vote. That was my understanding, that we were doing the discussion and coming back to that idea.
We have a sidebar going on right now, I'm just going to let this continue.
You have to put a motion for a club sport on the agenda, you can't just revise the motion.
That's a substantive change. That was really just part of the discussion, there was no, there was never a motion for him to table.
Can we call a recess?
Yeah. I'm having a request for a recess right now. We're going to recess for, we're going to give it five minutes, and we're going to go into.
Recession?
Yeah, we're going to take five minutes, and we're going to go into.
Can you do that after, call the question?
I'm taking a recess right now, we're going in, we're going to have a recess and an exec session in the Guidance Counselors' Room right now, or take a bio break, we're taking five minutes right now.
We're in recess right now.
Where's Mary Joy?
She quit.
Right before we, right before we called. I just want to bring something up that correct what I said earlier. I made a mistake in referring to my friend. That's just what I want to do.
No, no, hold on. I'm sorry. We're, we're gonna reconvene. We're all gonna sit down, board members. We now have everyone who is here, including Ms. Cruz, who's on the phone, correct, Ms. Cruz? Thank you very much. Alright, so we are reconvening now. We are going to proceed with taking a vote. We are not pursuing the motion to table. We are going to vote on this. Mr. Boyer said he wanted to make a correction from a prior statement.
Yeah, my apologies. Real quick. I made a, I made a mistake because I got frazzled and got rushed with all my thought process. My friend that graduated from Southern Lehigh and went to Maryland, he wrestled the national champion and lost in the championship. So my bad. I just wanted to, just wanted to correct that.
Okay, thanks for that correction. Now, we are going to proceed with a vote. We have a motion and a second for item A, girls junior high wrestling. And a question has been called. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on. I have item four B, girls varsity wrestling. Sorry, just girls varsity wrestling team, period.
Ms. Gaiman?
Yes.
Hold on, I wanted to make a motion, please, to approve creation of a district-funded girls varsity wrestling team to begin competition in 2024, 2025 school year. There's a motion.
Did we, did we put them together?
No, we did not. They took them separately.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Ms. Torba?
I have a question for the audience. I'm gonna take a photo and I'm asking for all of your approval that I may take your photo. I have a, I have a different angle.
Take a picture.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Alright, now thank you all for coming out tonight and thank you for being patient with us. You are more than welcome to go home right now and clear the room. I'm gonna give a second for you all to celebrate and clear the room if you so choose. Alright, so if you are going to stay, please stay. And if you are not, you are welcome to go out in the hallway and celebrate. But we are gonna move on to human resources. We don't have anything under budget and finance, do we? No, okay. Alright, so moving on, we're moving on to human resources. You're good. You have his email address, right? I, I thank you. I appreciate it. I'm just moving on. Alright, we're gonna close that door because I'm sure we're gonna have interference. Could you close that behind you, please? Anyone? Any, thank you so much, Jen. Alright.
Ms. Gaiman?
Yes.
I just want to ask, how do we inform middle school coed soccer of how, what they need to do?
That, that the procedure for having three years of club is not necessary and therefore during this budget cycle, they could, alright, how, Dr. Mayan?
Actually, you know, I, I can comment on that because I, I promise you that the, the president and those who work to bring coed soccer to the board, they are well aware. They're well aware of the current, you know, what we're doing.
Since, as of when?
So, but could we?
From my understanding earlier today, they were not on there.
Ms. Torba, Ms. Torba's asking the administration how we can contact and will, is that, is that something the administration will take on?
The board wishes to vote to instruct the administration to invite people to go apply for things. I mean, I, I, I don't, I, I don't have standing to go invite teams to come do things.
Okay.
And, and I certainly wouldn't want to introduce a divisive topic to the board that really, I mean, I'm happy to do whatever the board would like me to do.
That answers the question of.
But I'm not inclined to go, because I don't know what to tell them. If I go and say, well, come to the board, and they'll say, well, does the board want to make the team? And I'll say, I don't know. Right? And so, again, I'm happy to do whatever, but I, I need clear direction.
To inform them that they're not in violation of becoming a sport. They always thought they were because of policy one, two, three, dot.
Yeah, one, two, three, whatever.
And, and according to one, two, three, I think they could have applied at any time to be a varsity sport, even in the beginning.
They, they, they could have.
They could have, but I think it's been stated at board meetings that you needed.
They interpreted the policy as, and no one encouraged them for interpretation.
So, I, I think that's something that can be.
I think there's something that's worthwhile that we should talk to the athletic director in regards to how it's viewed from a coed standpoint. Because from a standpoint, if you would move and shift to a junior high type setup similar to like what we just voted on for wrestling, it would fall under those guidelines for basically like what we're looking at it from with a PIAA sport interest in mind.
Right. And, and the other point is, like, I haven't looked into, and our administration hasn't looked into coed soccer with respect to a, a recommendation to come to the board. I mean, I may say, look, I don't think we need that sport. And I may, well, I mean, I'm, I'm just, and, and so, so I.
Ms. Torba was just asking the question. We're just looking for an answer.
A false impression either because, as I said before, girls wrestling, I feel was a one-off position. And I think the board absolutely made the right decision because of the very unusual circumstances that did have equity component to it, right? And I'm not saying we would have violated Title IX if we did or we didn't. But it's a, it is a very clear and distinct circumstance compared to coed soccer, in my opinion. And I would not be prepared to say one way or the other, whether we should be approving that or not. And certainly the board would approve whatever it did. And if they come, and if the board chooses to take up that issue, then that is, I think, something the board should be cautious about because then you will every week be sitting there saying, who's next? As far as my parade of people who want stuff, right? And, and it will be, it'll go down to the beakers in the chemistry lab. Because, because if, if, if that's the approach that is taken by the board, then that's where we'll, we'll be heading. And I'm not disputing anything that anyone is saying. But you just, I'm fearful that once this gets started, it's, it's problematic.
Alright, so.
Hundred percent.
Torba asked the question. Ms. Torba asked the question, and the answer is, there is no procedure. Nobody is going to reach out unless specifically right now directed by the board to do so. So that's your answer.
Board members can certainly, I mean, you are all elected officials. You have connections with.
And it's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting.
Public information.
So, I mean, people can go and express whatever it is.
Melissa, I, I promise you, they all know. They know now.
It was just a question on how somebody who's in process of being a club, because that was their understanding back in 2022, that that's the process they had to follow. But now they're, it's been noted, they wouldn't be in violation if they want to become a sport. My ask was only, is there a process that administration notifies those organizers? That was the ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the Human Resources Board Report. This is short and it is timely. That's why we're voting on it tonight instead of another night. Anything to add? I think it's, all we have on this is Liberty Trails. Anything to add, Ms. Drake Little?
Uh, no, the other one is just that student seasonal worker. We used to, uh, we've upped the rate to be more competitive.
Okay.
From what it was many years ago.
Thank you. So that's the only other change on here. Alright. Motion to approve the Human Resources Board Report?
Aye.
Pick one, Ms. Lobley. Everyone said motion. Second? Pick one again. The only question I have is, are we going to need additional program teachers to flesh out?
So, so once the approval for this is done, we are ready to post tomorrow morning.
Okay, so there will be additional. Okay, great, great. All those in favor? Oh, wait, unless somebody had another question.
I just wanted to clarify, this is the Liberty Trails.
It is Liberty Trails and the student seasonal summer staff increase and for three workers.
Which is great. So I, I want to thank the administration for bringing this. You know, I know they worked very hard. There, there were some unforeseen changes, last-minute changes. I know a number of community members, you know, had some concerns about Liberty Trails. It's a great program. It has a lot of support. I know, I had communicated that the board supported Liberty Trails. So I want to thank administration for, for, you know, making sure that this continues. Yes, well, I want to thank these two people publicly. Thank you.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Committee reports.
I'll just.
Do you have, anybody have a fast?
Yeah, real fast. Alright, uh, Facilities Committee, we met on April 2nd, talked about bidding for our electric and gas currently. Um, right now, just for the electric, we're waiting, uh, we will hear back or estimate that we'll hear back in May. Uh, that's obviously through the consortium. Um, in regards to, it was brought up about maintenance equipment for our new turf. Um, there is several different pieces or a piece of equipment that is used for maintaining the turf itself. So grooming, picking up trash, metal magnets and stuff like that. Um, so there was discussion in regards to, um, three different, uh, piece of equipment. Um, we will be making a recommendation for one that should be on the agenda for, in two weeks for voting for the rest of the board. Um, HVAC update, the pipe staging should be taking place, um, for the work here at the high school soon. Tentative schedule is immediately when school lets out and teachers are out of the building. Uh, that should be around the June 7th timeframe. Um, the AC will go down in the building and will be down for the summer. Uh, targeting that the AC will be back on, um, worst case scenario, uh, the week that the teachers return. Obviously, that is worst case scenario. We talked about that, uh, in depth. Um, in regards to, um, storage, we talked about storage for the chillers. Um, those, that delivery, uh, Mr. Rohrbach and, and Lou worked with, uh, the manufacturer in regards to delaying the delivery until June. So that way we don't take them any used space or create any unwanted safety hazards here on property. Um, in regards to library discussion, we talked in depth about, uh, and we reviewed the report that was from back in October, uh, in regards to a revamp or a re-m. two-tiered PIAA sport structure at all at Southern Lehigh. So that this policy would preclude any club PIAA sport. You could still have club sports, yeah.
So then, wait, that goes through, that'll come towards the board, they'll vote on it?
Yes. So we're introducing that language now because in that conversation, if we have a first and second reading of a policy that essentially, and we will have our solicitor here at that meeting, that second meeting, at least I believe so, she's usually here at that voting meeting. So the policy will then, yes, you are correct, in effect, go again. So we'll have to have a conversation that evening about what happens to middle school co-ed club. Because we are writing a policy to eliminate club sports.
To eliminate club, they're still in club.
Yes. And so what do we do if we have during the spring season, a sports team functioning as a PIAA club when we just changed the policy mid-season to not have it at all? So we will have, absolutely have to iron out those details in some capacity.
And then moving forward as well, I guess, then, there would have to be a motion then to, they would have to come forward and.
So two things will happen.
Run a motion.
Right.
On an agenda becomes four.
Right. So two things, two things will happen when we discuss this policy at our next meeting. One will be, the board will discuss whether that's direction it wants to go with the policy. And we'll have, and so we'll have an entire discussion. And if we rework the language then, then the policy committee has done as much as it thinks it needs to, to bring this to the board. And well, that's a valid discussion to have at that time. And we'll have a first reading and then we will move on and have a second reading after that. We will still, in that policy, just as an update for you to think about, we will still in that policy have an allowance for club sports that are not at a PIAA level. So like the examples we were using is table tennis or cup stacking or, you know, a non-PIAA club soccer that is club status but not PIAA. But there would not be a two-tiered system of a PIAA club sport allowed in addition to a PIAA varsity sport allowed. And that is the discussion.
I'm sorry, just can you clarify? So if it's a PIAA sanctioned sport, it wouldn't, it would not be a club sport?
Correct.
If it came to the board, it would be a PIAA sport?
Correct.
Just like we were, we were advocating for girls wrestling.
Correct. We would have, but we, other sports that would be considered sports could still be clubs.
That are true sports. So I think the concern that was raised earlier was, you know, has this, has this undergone a vetting process? You know, to go to, to become a PIAA sanctioned sport, it's an incredible process to go through. So it's kind of already been vetted from that perspective.
Well, where Southern Lehigh stands right now, from a PIAA standpoint in regards to the abundance of sports that we have right now, the, well, now that girls wrestling is approved, the only sports that remain on the table that Southern Lehigh does not offer that are PIAA sanctioned already and would go right to PIAA sanction and funding would be bowling, gymnastics and water polo.
And ice hockey. A couple of years ago, we had folks advocating.
Are they still, oh, they merged?
They merged, yes. So when that happened, we had folks, just like we had tonight, asking for, I see teachers in the background nodding their heads. But yeah, we were here back then, Amy, right? You and me, sitting here in these meetings.
So then it would be those four sports that right now.
Could, could, right, right, right. But until, until we have a girls wrestling situation, like if table tennis was created and turned into. Correct. That's what the policy committee is proposing.
So for the sports that aren't like table tennis, that's not PIAA, it would just go into.
Club.
Club. And then there would be strict guidelines or direction in regards to how that funding and stuff gets allocated?
The way the policy committee left it was that there would have to be some sort of AR attached for, and we, you know, there were three preliminary, kind of, one, two, and three, you'd have to, and also there would be a discussion of whether it was or was, to what degree it is or isn't school-funded, what percent, you know, that would have to be worked out from a, at an administrative level. But the basic policy guideline would be, we don't have PIAA club sports. We do have club sports. We do have other activities.
Okay.
And that is my policy committee report. Moving on to Ed.
AC, ACMC, we're going to be meeting April 17th. That's it for that one. And then, that's going to be my shortest one ever, I think. I heard, Ed Committee. Ed Committee, the meeting was April 4th, and we talked about handbooks at various levels and code of conduct for athletes. I'll ask for approval at the end of the month. We recommended that you vote in favor or approve. Full-day kindergarten, it was an intro with lots of guiding questions. I just want to thank Dr. Trinkle for doing an amazing job putting that all together. We talked, it was a really good discussion. There were some community members here. We talked about the history and moving forward. We talked about RFPs, RFQs and the difference between those and as the possibility of that being the next step. So we weren't there yet, otherwise I'd be bringing it to the end of the month. So our next meeting is May 14th. And we'll talk, we'll get some more answers from questions that were asked and continue talking about full-day K and some other items that are going to be coming up. There were like 22, I don't know, I was, there were like over 20 guiding questions. It was just what we would need to look at and the possibility of needing some outside help to look at some of those as far as a study goes. For LCTI, permission from Steve to give that one, I appreciate it. I do have a presentation that I'll send tonight to the board members. A security officer won an award for saving a life at a local YMCA using a technique that he learned at a CPR class at LCTI, if I got all that right. September 18th to the 20th, there's a PAC summit for superintendents. CIS, Community and Schools, gave a presentation. They have a caseload of 50 students that they worked with, and they gave evidence that the attendance, behavior and academics all improved. It was a 76 to zero final count for board members in the area approving the LCTI budget. So I appreciate you guys doing that. LCTI has a total of 20 students that advanced to nationals in two separate competitions. They did talk a little bit about capacity issues. They're not talking about new buildings, but they're talking about staffing in the future. For example, cosmetology right now has 150 students on the waiting list. Criminal justice has about 50. So they're having a tough time with staffing, meeting the needs. Dual enrollment has 52 students at LCTI that will be learning, earning LTRIC credits. And then they talked about Act 158, graduation pathway. But I'll talk more about that another time, I think. Next meeting is April 24th. I will not be there.
All right, thank you. That concludes committee reports. And, sorry, I had too many tabs open. New business? Other business?
Other business, robotics was not able to advance. They had some technical issues. So it was unfortunate. I reached out to Mr. Pip and just thanked him. My daughter was in it for four years and she had not one ounce of regret on Saturday when they found out they weren't advancing to Worlds. It was disappointing, but she had a great time. And then also, it's National Library Week. So thank you, school librarians, if you could pass that on. Amy, if you could pass that on to the school librarians. I appreciate what they do. Thanks.
Thank you. Did you have, sorry, did I turn my mic off or on? Did you have something else?
No, I had no report, but I'd like just to recognize all our staff today. The eclipse, there was a lot of hubbub of the eclipse. And I want to thank and recognize all our staff for maintaining, maintaining the excitement and the order for dismissal.
Regardless of when that dismissal happened.
That is so true. I visit every school as it was going out today. I think I got a sunburn because of the, spite of the eclipse. But thank you all. That was a great point to make. Our staff was exemplary today. And the kids too, the kids too. Some of the little kindergarten kids were coming out very much afraid. They had their hoods up.
The middle school bus went by and a kid got off, a child, a student got off and glasses were on. And that was nice to see in my neighborhood. So thank you to the staff and the administration for building that excitement.
Good to hear. Cut to our Q. Fosley, great. We do have, all right, we're going to conclude, we're going to conclude, yeah, exactly. Because, because Mr. Suma knows what's coming. We do have visitor comment. Mr. Deevil, that was a terrible introduction. I didn't mean it that way. But we do have one more visitor comment, Mr. Paul Deevil. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaiman.
You're welcome.
And in fact, fortunately, in the committee comments, you covered some of the comments I was going to make regarding policy 123.2. And I'm glad to hear that it is going to be updated. As the policy is written right now, in section five, it requires that a sport be a club sport for three years before advancing the varsity. But it doesn't preclude it going from straight, from straight to varsity from not existing. And so your solicitor obviously was correct in that interpretation. So I'm glad beyond that, the policy is going to be updated. And I would, of course, encourage to still allow for club status for sports that aren't PIAA sanctioned. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And, and just as another note, Mr. Deevil, not only will it allow for non-PIAA sports, but it will also allow for other competitive activities and teams that are not, yeah. That, that will still be allowed under that policy despite the change. All right, that is our last visitor comment for the evening. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Or dismiss?
Well, thank you all.